Good evening, Chair. Calls order, public hearing for Resolution 033-23, Bel Air Annexation Zoning Waiver. Mr. Giandridano, would you like to introduce Mr. Snee?
We need to know introduction.
Mr. Snee, yes, turning Bel Air. So I think working on everything from land use to rezoning. And this is a piece of property that I guess was, had some old houses on it that were condemned a long time ago, finally demolished about two years ago.
That's correct, Councilman. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Joseph Francis Snee Jr., 112 South Main Street, Bel Air, 21014, 1322 Grafton Shop Road, Bel Air, Maryland, and Unit 105, no, 502 133rd Street, Ocean City, Maryland, just for the record. With me is my paralegal extraordinaire, Megan Sheldon, and to my left is my co-council, Liz, if you would like to identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council. Elizabeth H. Thompson, Starken Canyon, PA, Town Council for the town of Bel Air, 30 Office Street, Bel Air, Maryland, 21014.
Thank you, Liz. This is Resolution Number 033-23. We have the good privilege of representing Gary Ristling and his wife Joan. The three entities are known as 304 South Tollgate Road LLC, 308, and 310, and then Bel Air Square LLC, which is right across the street. So our PowerPoint presentation is before the council, Mr. President, council members. We start with Parcel 19. In the petition, we identified it as Parcel A. It's 304 South Tollgate Road, approximately .83 acres, and it's 304 South Tollgate Road as part of the Silver Spring Heights subdivision. Hence, Silver Spring Mining Station is the reason for the name of Mr. Ristling's restaurant. Immediately adjacent is Parcel 659. It is identified as Map 49. Parcel 659, 308 South Tollgate Road. It's about 42,000 square feet, and it was part of the platted premises as well. Immediately downhill from that is Parcel 381, 310 South Tollgate Road. It's 77 by 300. And as Councilman Tony G. pointed out, they used to be occupied by homes that were run down, and they were razed by Mr. and Mrs. Ristling. So they are vacant properties as they are constituted today. So Parcel D is immediately across the street. It's owned by Bel Air Square LLC. This is the Tollgate Marketplace. It's a little bit of anomaly, and Ms. Thompson probably has a better understanding than I do, but for whatever reason, there's a sliver that was never annexed into the town of Bel Air, and it actually runs from where the bank is all the way down to Tollgate Marketplace. We are just annexing in to the extent we need to, right, right across from the three parcels that are highlighted in yellow that I just went through, in order to make sure that we are contiguous to the town as the statute requires in the Annotated Code of Maryland for annexation requests. It's known as Map 304, Parcel 250, and it's 615 Baltimore Pike. I happen to represent them. As Mr. President, the council may know, the Dix addition is being put on there, and I represent them, and they join in our petition requesting annexation. So the next map Ms. Sheldon just brought up are Parcels A, B, and C. That's what they're known as in the petition for annexation with the town of Bel Air. Parcel D is right across the street, and that's the anomaly I just described, and we want to help the town out with that, just to make sure it's in, so we don't have any problems in the future. Here's our timeline. We started out with the town back in October of 2022, and we're here tonight. What is tonight, 13th, 2023? So, you know, we're coming up on a year, and that's every step. I'm not going to read that, but it starts with the petition. We did an amended petition and so forth, and the town has supported us every step of the way, and I'm very appreciative to the town of Bel Air for their support for this annexation. As Mr. President, the council may know, Bel Air is essentially landlocked. There's very few annexation possibilities anymore, so it's really important for the town to add some tax base to its tax rolls. This is slated to be a climate-controlled mini-storage facility, state-of-the-art, and the really good news on that is you don't add traffic, because if anybody has mini-storage, which I do, it's one time in and usually one time out, and you're done. So there's no road improvements necessary. It's, it's all, you know, self-contained. It will be state-of-the-art fenced, security cameras, person on staff to watch it, landscape buffered. We've talked with all our neighbors, because there is residential around us, and we have had no complaints from, from any citizens that I'm aware of right now. What you have before you is Section 4-416, which is out of the Maryland Code, which requires the waiver in order for us to avail ourselves of the B3 zoning in Bel Air. It's currently B2 in Harford County. As the council knows, because we've done this many times, without the waiver, we cannot use the B3 zoning in Bel Air for five years. So it's incumbent upon me to get the B3 zoning really soon, rather than waiting five years in order for us to build the facility, and we need the B3 zoning in Bel Air. It's principally permitted then in Bel Air if we have the B3 zoning. So the next slide, you see Parcels A, B, C, and D. It's 2.6 acres, plus or minus. B2, Community Business District in the county. B3, General Business District in, in the town, which the town has graciously approved. And you can see the bird's-eye view of the parcels. That's before the homes were razed. So this is the permitted use chart in the town of Bel Air under its zoning code, and highlighted is the B3, B3A at the top, and jumping down to mini-storage on the left, highlighted in yellow, and all the way to the right, you can see that that use is principally permitted in that zoning district. Note next, a letter to Mr. Kevin Small, who's Director of Planning and Community Development for the town of Bel Air. That is, in fact, from Mr. Grimm seated behind me, saying that we need the waiver in order to use our new zoning classification. And I would just like to highlight towards the bottom, the Harford County Department of Public Works does not oppose the annexation, and for that matter, the zoning classification as well. That was followed by the Maryland Department of Planning, a letter dated February 22, 2023, which went to Mayor Bianca, and it's, it said the same thing. So the town told us we had to have a waiver, and Maryland Department of Planning said the same thing. So we're honored to be here to make that ask from the council. Just by way of history, some of the prior waivers that have been approved, whether it was my representation or another fine lawyer, these, I'm not going to go through them in detail, but we did do Bully Rock back, it's hard to believe, 20 years ago, and that waiver was granted by this council. The Guzzo property, also City of Havittagrace, which I did not represent them, also granted. Northeast side of Chesapeake Boulevard, Chesapeake Road, I should say, City of Aberdeen, also granted back in '07. Gilbert and Aldino Stepney, City of Aberdeen, granted in May of 2004. Bully Rock North, granted in 2002. Mount Felix, the Ionello property in the City of Havittagrace, back in 2014. The Seabird Annexation, back in 2019. Presbyterian Home of Maryland. So that was back, that was the small nine-acre piece on Long Drive back in 2022. The Lamson Property, June 16, 2022. Laxley Manor, also doing business at Wetlands Golf Course, 2021. And then it comes to the resolution, which opened the hearing, which is Resolution 033-23, which is before the council. We, we do have a couple hiccups that are going to require working with Mr. Kearney, a couple of amendments, but I'm going to have Ms. Thompson elaborate on those.
Thank you, Mr. Snee. Attached to your package is Exhibit B, is Annexation Agreement entered into between the applicants dated March 22, 2023. That annexation agreement with the town of Bel Air, the town agreed to cooperate in this waiver proceeding with respect to the specific lots, 304, 308, and 310 South Tollgate Road. The Sliver property across the street as part of Bel Air Town Center was not a part of that annexation agreement. So on behalf of the town, I'm requesting an amendment to remove any reference to part of 615 Baltimore Pike, Bel Air, Maryland, as part of the council's resolution. Also, in reviewing the proposed resolution, we did notice that in the last whereas clause on the first, on the first page of the resolution, it references that these lots had begun in the county as general industrial, which is incorrect. We are requesting amendment to change that to community business. B2 is what the zoning classification had begun as the county, and the references to the town's B3 General Business District is correct. As far as the Sliver and Lamaly, again, that's not part of this waiver proceeding, but the town believes that it was either an error in the surveying way back when, when surveying equipment wasn't as technical and specific as it is now, or some sort of right-of-way adjustment as the county owns the bed of South Tollgate Road. The town of Bel Air, as part of the annexation agreement, will be requesting the county to consent to the town annexing approximately 300 feet of South Tollgate Road at a later date in order to lock these two pieces together and keep everything contiguous and adjoining as required under Maryland law. Thank you.
So with that, Mr. President, we'd be happy to work with council and make sure those things are taken care of by amendment. And with that, we would conclude our presentation.
Mr. Kearney?
I already have the information, and I've started drafting the amendments.
Okay, thank you.
They'll be ready for next week.
Thank you, council. Any questions, comments? Mr. Giandridano?
Thank you, Mr. Snee. I know those buildings were there for quite a long time. They were probably an eyesore for at least 15 years. I've heard people complain about them before and a little bit while I'm on here. Now, I know there's another storage facility being built on Route 1, so this, a little bit further down by the car dealership, so this is another stack-and-store or something like that facility, climate-controlled. If you didn't do that, it looks like it's also allowed to put home density there, too.
It's a really good question. If we go back to the use chart, and let me get to that page, because I can't see that Anything, Councilman, is principally permitted as outlined, yes, on Slide 10. So B3, B3A, you'll notice from bank at the beginning of the page, at the top of the page, to motion picture distribution, anything with a P is principally permitted as a matter of right. Any SE is a special exception, meaning it has to go to the Board of Appeals. Anything with an SD means it's special development, which requires an extra level of scrutiny by the town of Bel Air Planning Commission, and that's, that's really, really it. Now, it got cut off at the bottom, so I can't speak to what's at the bottom, but yes, if the mini-storage didn't happen, those uses could happen, for sure.
May I add to that, Mr. Snee?
Yes, ma'am.
Paragraph 2 of the annexation agreement entered into with the applicant in the town of Bel Air specifically sets forth the permitted uses in which the applicant has agreed to under the annexation agreement. And the town of Bel Air, they have agreed that absolutely no residential uses will be used on the property. It would only be used for commercial purposes. This document has been recorded in the land records of Harford County.
And anecdotally, so when it comes to mini-storage, it is the highest per-square-foot rental rate in the United States of America. That's why they're so attractive, and there's demand for them. So we've been working with end-users on that. I'm not going to say that that's going to happen, but it looks promising, for sure.
Let's see if I, okay, I appreciate the answer to that. Let me, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giandridano. Mr. Bennett?
My question is mostly procedural, and just understanding what you presented in that it has to be contiguous in order for it to be permitted by state law. How are we doing this portion first and then the connecting piece later? Like, wouldn't that make it non-contiguous for the time being? So shouldn't, shouldn't we move on the, the piece that connects it first and then these three parcels of land?
It's an excellent question, Councilman Bennett. And I will tell you, except for one annexation in the City of Aberdeen, I've done every single one since the Long property where Ripken Stadium is, and I use the term, "we jump roadbeds." We do it all the time, and you'll note in the City of Aberdeen that some parts are county-owned, but we've jumped them from side to side to annex properties. In my humble opinion, you're allowed to do that from a purely legal point of view. So I understand the concern. The town has raised that with me. I don't agree with that, but I think we're in good legal position in order to get this done. But I, you're very astute in that question.
I just want to make sure we don't do anything that we're not legally allowed to do, just because you made a point of specifically sharing that and then also sharing how we are not going to be doing that for a temporary period of time, but still for a period of time.
Can I add to that? There's just been a little bit of delay in making sure that our resolution was not subject to annexation and was finalized before we actually expended the funds, because this, our agreement was conditioned upon the finalization of the town of Bel Air's, excuse me, annexation charter amendment, including these properties. So we had gotten a quote for the survey for the 300 feet of South Tollgate Road to lock the pieces together, and we're just waiting for that survey to come. I've already made inquiries, and at least three or four times from the county law department, and requested their position with respect to it, and I have not yet received a clear answer as to whether or not the county would consent.
And what would be the cost from a time perspective to wait until you have all that and you can move that piece of annexation forward so that it is truly contiguous? Like, what do you think the timeline would be on that piece of this?
I'm anticipating having the survey completed by Fred Ward within, I would say, two months. I mean, we're certainly not, the town's position is just that, you know, we'll cooperate with moving forward with them, but it's up to the council as to whether or not it actually grants the waiver. We would like to do, obviously, the annexation sooner, just to, just to get that piece done so we don't lose sight of it.
And Councilman Bennett, just to add to that, the annexation has been completed with the town of Bel Air, but this roadbed issue is subject to Ms. Thompson, Fred Ward, and that'll be done as well. But we are, we have been annexed, and the 45-day referendum period has been exhausted without anything from anybody.
I second confirm that. We have not received any referendum, petition for referendum on that annexation.
Anything else, Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, it's everything.
Good. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There are no speakers, Mr. President.
With no one else signed up to speak, this will conclude this public hearing for Resolution 033-23, and we'll take it up at our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council.
Next, Resolution 034-23, Public Necessity, Bel Air South.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Semac. I'm Director of Public Works for Harford County, 212 South Bond Street, Bel Air, 21014. Over the past 20-plus years, Harford County has constructed eight roundabouts along Tollgate Road. This series of roundabouts has allowed for over five miles of uninterrupted traffic to travel between Baltimore Pike at the Harford Mall and Constant Friendship with no red lights or stop zones. Roundabouts are known to reduce accidents, slow speeds, and improve traffic circulation by eliminating turning movements and reducing queuing backups of vehicles waiting to enter intersections. Our ninth roundabout on Tollgate Road has been designed at the intersection of Bel Air South Parkway at the entrance to the Bel Air South Community's private entrance road. However, in order to construct the roundabout, the county will have to acquire easements from the property owner, Bel Air South Community Association South, Inc., for permanent drainage, utility, road improvement, and stormwater management easements, and temporary construction access easements. Please note that this project does not require any acquisition of private property or individual rights away. Over the past several years, the highway engineering staff of, of Public Works has been negotiating with the community association and working with them to obtain a sufficient number of signatures from members of the association to approve the transfer of the temporary and permanent easements. We've had numerous meetings, repeated phone calls and emails, and multiple letters have been sent, but we've been unable to come to terms with the association. And I should note that the discussions have been very positive with the officers of the association. However, as we understand it, their bylaws require a significant percentage of owners in order to approve any property right or easement right relinquishment to us or anyone else, someone in the order of like 75%. And the association leadership has not been able to get that many people to one meeting or to make one vote. So the, the discussions have been positive, but this has been going on for a long time. So as a result, we respectfully request that the county council determine that the Bel Air South Parkway at Tollgate Road roundabout project is a necessary public works project, and it's in the best interest of the general public to acquire the temporary and permanent easements required for construction of the project. Are you happy to answer any questions you might have?
Mr. Giandridano?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Semac, thank you for presentation on that. I know 20 years ago, I guess Jeff Strademire started the roundabout projects in and around Bel Air. Being a former resident of the state of New Jersey, roundabouts are a, are a common site, usually two lanes, which is much different from our roundabouts with one lane. So navigating a, a two-lane roundabout is, is harrowing experience for somebody who, who doesn't have an idea. And I think you're right. I think, especially in that area, it's, it's gotten to the point now where you've got, that road goes all the way through, all the way into Bel Air with the apartments and everything, so it's a, it's a much busier intersection than it was, you know, five years ago or even 20 years ago. So thank you for explaining that they can't get everybody together to agree on, on this, and it looks like it's something that's necessary for, for safety. I guess the only thing I'd, I'd like to say, I know I still go around some of these circles and, and you still almost have some accidents, so I don't know if there's any improvements that you guys see that could possibly be made on, in some of these roundabouts moving forward, or if it's just status quo, so.
Well, it's not status quo at all, and thanks to Jeff Strademire, as you said, who was somewhat of a pioneer, not just with Harford County, but also statewide. He was recognized as one of the, the leading subject matter experts on roundabouts, at least around here. And the, the, the best practices are evolving constantly because they're being more popular for the, for the positive benefits that they do bring. So our current bank of engineers, including Glenn Hebbel, who sends his regrets that he's not able to be here, he's got a, a family issue at home, but we are always looking to comply with not only the standards and the codes, but also best practices to avoid the type of situations you're concerned about.
Is there any, is there any, anything in the best practices where as somebody is, is coming up to enter a circle, maybe the other person sees a, a flashing light or some, something? Because I know there's been instances where I've come across and some of these people are speeding down the other, the other way, and it's, it's almost like who gets there first is, is, they think they have the right of way, so.
Unfortunately, that factor of human behavior at, on roads is a little bit all too common. The idea of including flashing lights of any kind typically in a roundabout is discouraged. There's a lot to keep an eye on, there's a lot to watch, although it's safer than, you know, you're avoiding the T-bone type of crashes. However, adding lights can be distracting to at least a few things that you have to keep an eye on, so they are generally discouraged.
What has changed in the last five years on a roundabout? Can anybody tell me that? What improvements have been?
I can't, but I'd be happy to get Glenn Hebbel or one of our highway engineer experts to be able to fill you in on some of those details.
I, I would appreciate that.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Joe, how much ground are we talking about? How much ground do you need there?
It's on the order of about a third of an acre total.
A third of an acre.
I have 1,828 square feet, or .042 acres.
That's for the drainage and utility and stormwater management easement. There's another .148 acres, and another .53 acres, and another .07, so the total number of, it's, it's in four different strips.
So 2,300 square feet, 6,400 square feet, and then the 1,800 square feet, including the drainage. That's the three.
And the temporary construction easement is 3,026, so there's four total.
There's four, but then that temporary easement will go back?
Correct. Correct.
And you said the HOA has to have a 75%?
I believe that's the number. It's very high that they haven't been able to assemble enough people to be able to sign off.
Have they taken a vote with any that have assembled?
I'm sorry?
Have they taken any votes at all?
My understanding is that they haven't because they haven't had enough people to generate the quorum to be able to get in accordance with their bylaws, as we understand.
Okay. Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Mr. Seemak. I agree with the population and density of the area. That's a heavily traveled intersection, and this would help out a lot. And this, just kind of follow-up on the council presidents, I know that the cooperation with the association isn't there, but do you know of any opposition whatsoever? Have you heard of any opposition within the community or the association?
Not that we have heard.
And then, if we were to condemn the land, I'm assuming there would be some compensation to the association at all, right?
There will be.
Okay. Do we know what that projected amount would be?
I know that appraisals were done, and I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but we'll make sure that we let you all know if you have to approve. If we go even farther, then we will.
Thank you, sir.
Now, keep in mind that the condemnation is for the purpose of acquiring an easement, not condemning the property so that they can't use it anymore, that we would take that as right of way.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Guthrie?
I was involved in a couple of these over the years, and I remember when Mr. Stripmatt was here, and they wanted to put a roundabout in this one particular intersection, it's the northern part of county, and it just, speeders just would come through that intersection like you wouldn't believe. He had a video, you ain't gonna believe this, but he had a video of a guy walking across the street and a car coming down and hitting him and driving him up. Fortunately, the guy lived, for somehow the car hit him head-on, and he's walking, and drove him up on the grass, and he lived. And then they showed how many accidents, I don't know how many dozens or so in that intersection over the previous six months, and after he put it in, six months later, they didn't have any. So, they're very, they work a lot. They do, I had one on Trimble Road there at a Magnolia Elementary School, right there. I was sitting there at that intersection one time, waiting to make a left-hand turn to go down Magnolia Middle to see my grandson play ball, and I'm sitting there waiting to turn left, and I'm looking up my rearview mirror, here comes a car, you know, and I can't move. The car's coming this way, they're behind me, I can't move. All I do, I see the hair of this lady driving, because she's down here doing something. And I said, oh, my God, I'm getting, and she plowed right into me. And they put a roundabout there because of that, those accidents that we're having there. Since they put that roundabout there, they have not had an accident.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? Do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have one, Bill Whalen.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Bill Whalen, 415 Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland. I live within three-tenths of this proposed roundabout. I fully support it in proving the public necessity before the need of construction of a traffic circle at Tollgate and South Parkway. I know at least 10 years or more this was needed after Tollgate Road South was extended from Plum Tree through the development of the Avanti Apartments, all the way down to 95. Frankly, I was unaware of the problems the Department of Public Works had getting approval from Bel Air South to transfer the temporary and permanent easements. If anything, it's going to help them, because they have difficulty getting out of there. If you travel on Bel Air South Parkway towards Tollgate Road, which many vehicles now do, to go north or south on Tollgate Road, you will really see the dangers of vehicles trying to make left or rights on the Tollgate. This is a safety issue for vehicles wanting to make a left turn from Tollgate to get onto South Parkway. Mr. Guthrie, and in your comments, there's idiots out on the roads all the time.
That's right.
Circles are really useful if you yield the sign, you see somebody in the circle, you don't do it, and you slow down. Yes, there are idiots. I only want to say that all the roundabouts that we do have on Tollgate Road, they have reduced the speed, and they do really allow easier access for driver entering from side streets. I really applaud Jeff Strademire. I worked with him on that big circle at Plum Tree and going up to 24 at Tollgate Road. It was very unique what he did, because somebody didn't want to sell the property, and it's worked out fine. Once in a while, there's a queuing issue, but my observation, I use it every day, it's great. So, acquiring the construction easement and constructing the roundabout is in the best interest of the public, and the bill should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
This will go ahead and conclude the public hearing on Resolution 03423, and we'll be taking up, thank you, Mr. Seemak. Next is Bill 23-023, Civil Penalties. Mr. Bunckus?
Good evening. Thank you, Council President.
Good evening.
And members of the council. I have for you the civil litigation, or the civil citation bill. This is a tool that I said early on when I was before the council, we'd like to see put in the toolbox for enforcement, and specifically, and primarily helps.
Bring your mic to you.
I'm sorry.
Turn it off.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm used to projecting in court.
I could hear you just fine. Go right ahead.
This is one of the tools we want in the toolbox. It's primarily for the Department of Planning and Zoning. Tangentially, it's for the Department of Public Works, the Department, I mean, the Department of Inspections, Licenses, and Permits. They have separate enforcement provisions that they can elect to utilize under the Building Code provisions that are adopted into the code. Right now, planning and zoning has no civil citation authority, and it's really our hope in terms of encouraging compliance to use civil citation, which is favored by the courts. It is generally a more rapid process, and it's a process that when we're going after zoning enforcement, we'd like to use earlier on to encourage compliance, because right now, without this tool, what happens is we really wait till a situation becomes extreme, because it's got to be extreme to really go after a criminal penalty and/or to try to do enforcement through injunction or through some other remedy. So, this would give us a tool that would, that allows flexibility, but also allows more prompt notification and a process towards compliance and reconciliation of issues. So, that's why we think it's an important tool in the toolbox. Quite frankly, the vast majority of jurisdictions that I've represented over my 30-plus years representing local governments have a civil citation of enforcement authority for zoning. I know we got some questions in terms of why is it limited to 500 when we have other provisions in the code that can go up to 1,000? Quite frankly, that has to do with the enabling legislation. And so, for example, we got a question from Council Representative Deon and Guthrie, and he asked, you know, why can't it be 1,000? Baltimore County has 1,000, Baltimore County has a separate, well...
5,000, but that was for different, I found out.
That was multiplied, but they have a, they have a separate enabling statute in the land use article, it's under 9302. We have, we have to go, because we don't have separate enabling authority just for Harford County, we have to go into the general provision, which is 11201 at SEC. That's what we've done. This bill follows the requirements of our enabling authority, and in essence utilizes and adopts that enabling authority to give us the civil citation enforcement tool. I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bunckus. Mr. Janzer-Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Bunckus. If somebody doesn't pay the fine in a certain period of time, is there an increase in the fine?
So, what happens, it's kind of a convoluted process. The short answer, there can be an increase in the fine. In other words, you have to give, you have to give the citation, and then the person has an opportunity to go to court, or to pay the citation. If they elect to go to court, then we go to court, and if we prevail in court, then we can ask for the fine to be doubled through the court proceeding. And thereafter, if we have, if we have adjudication of violation, each day could become a separately finable offense. If the person neither responds by paying the citation, nor responds by requesting a date to try and determine, to go to court and determine whether there is a citable, a violation of the code that's finable, then we have to kind of repeat the process in terms of, we have to ask the court to enforce the citation, and we, the county, has to take that step. The person has, has an opportunity, when we do that, to request, to submit a notice to defend under the district court procedural rules, and then we would have to try it, and if we prevail, this bill authorizes the court to double the fine at that point. And the court obviously has discretion, so I think my experience in doing code enforcement, it depends on the nature of the violation and the nature of the recalcitrance of the person who's being cited. Courts generally like to see these things get resolved and to seek compliance with the code. Their, if you will, their willingness to assess fines increases as obstinance and just straight, you know, dereliction of the law is manifested by an owner or an occupant.
Out of 620 cases, what is the expectation of moving forward, of how many of those will be tried, and how much time does that take up? And does that take up a whole attorney that's just going to be dedicated to trial for this? Do you have a number yet?
No, I don't know where you come with, I'm not sure where you come with 620 cases.
620 case violations between the two departments for fiscal year 2023, there have been 620 case violations between the two departments. Extrapolating a full year and assuming one-third of the cases would result in a civil penalty, this bill would result in increased revenue of approximately 118,000. So, I'm wondering if, out of 623, how many, how many do you guys maybe have said, well, we're going to, you know, 50% or 20% or 10% are going to go to court, and how much time does that take? Any idea?
Well, every case will take, every case that goes to court, you can, you can anticipate approximately a day of time between when you, and it shortens as you get into the process and do it more. But preparing the witnesses, preparing the documentation, usually, you know, an hour to three hours, again, it becomes, the more you do it, the better you get at it. And then, you can sit around in court with one of these things easily for half a day, because usually, as you know, in district court, the court goes through, it's uncontested docket first, this would be a contested, this could be a contested docket, and so you wait, and then you handle that case. So, it's, you know, combined time, my estimation would be a day of time.
And out of the 620...
From attorney time. Now, the other thing I will say is, you know, as people understand that you're going to enforce and your enforcement is successful, that tends to generate compliance.
I got you.
And so, you know, the purpose here is not, the purpose here is not to extort money from people, the purpose here is to obtain compliance with the code and to get people to respect the code, you know, and respect the give and take that's provided through zoning code, both the benefit and the burden. And so, you know, my anticipation over time would be that as people realize that, hey, Harford County takes, you know, takes these matters seriously and will pursue them to the extent necessary, that tends to, that tends to be an impetus for voluntary compliance, and we certainly would hope that would be the case.
Okay. Do you guys know of the 600, and maybe you wouldn't know, but somebody else would, of the 620 case violations, what the majority was, and what, and what area? Just trying to get an idea, and you've got a lot of violations, where do they mostly?
Good afternoon, or good evening, Councilman. Rich D, Director of Inspection and License Permits. I think the number that you got there is a combination of case file work that was from Department of Planning and Zoning, Department of Inspection and License Permits through our permitting system and complaint system. It, I think it's going to vary. I think most of those complaints are going to be more zoning-related than dealt, but obviously, we have complaints such as working without permits, occupying structures without CBOs, swimming pool complaints, abandoned structures, things like that. Zoning's going to have more land enforcement. So, as Mr. Bunckus was saying, this does give us a different tool in the toolbox that we've never had before. I don't know that it's going to facilitate more time in regards to the Law Department adjudicating this work, trying to enforce it. I think it is going to give us that threat or that ability to say, hey, this is what could potentially happen, and we're going to get more compliance on the front end, which there is a lot of time that is spent by both departments, you know, tracking these cases, working these cases, and trying to gain compliance. And ultimately, there are a fair amount that we just don't get to the point where we can solve it in the department, we're then, you know, asking the Law Department for that assistance. So, I think that's going to help as well.
Okay. Thanks. I just appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for that information. I appreciate that. We had a meeting, and our community is very interested in this bill, and we have, I see we have two people here, I think they're both going to speak in regards to this bill. We were really interested in saying, giving the bill some teeth, and we wanted to raise the 500 to 5,000. I was going to put an amendment, and found out that the law won't let us do that, you know, it's, because 500 bucks is chump change. There's some people out there, some of these contractors or whatever, it might be in violation or something, you know, they'll violate it and they'll pay the 500. It's nothing. So, I, what I, a couple of questions I got is, first off, the originally reserved down 152, we've had umpteen problems with that place and what they're doing down there, it's caused us all kinds of issues. It's, it's, last summer, it made our entire Ramsey Island basin a sea of mud. And that eventually is going to cost us upwards of a million dollars or more when we're going to have to dredge, because all that mud and all the stuff that was in the water, where did it go? Eventually sank right to the bottom, and probably going to wind up having to dredge it a lot earlier than we expected to dredge it, and you know how much that's going to cost. So, we really need to get these people's attention, and the only way you can get it is, you're right, with money. You know, we don't want their money, we want them to do what they're supposed to do. So, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions, whether you have this information or not. I understand that on this originally reserved property, they shut them down four different times, but fined them once. Could you tell me what the four issues were that they shut them down for, and how much they fined them? Do you have that info?
I have not specifically had, had an opportunity to run that down since getting that this afternoon. I can run that down and get back to you, and we'll do so.
Okay. Let me ask this question, since we can't raise the 500, I'm reading the potential of bill here, and it says, "The county department director and designated may impose a fine not to exceed 500 dollars for each violation." We're interested in giving it more teeth, if we can do it. If we can do it for you with amendments, we'll gladly do it. I was looking at that and decided, well, we can't raise the money, can't, because it doesn't really say whether that's a $500 fine for that violation, or can it be $500 per day until the violation is corrected? Is that possible?
Well, so, if you, if you look at, I believe it's on page six where we're not amending, once there's an adjudication of a violation, then each additional day that that violation goes uncorrected will constitute a separately finable offense. We would have to, we would have to pursue that.
In court?
In court.
So...
But again, and so again, that's why I suggest, why I suggest, you know, first, you want to get the violation established, then that starts to give you the teeth if nothing's done. You know, the hope, and generally, when you go to court, the court says, you know, again, my experience with code enforcement, the court will assess a fine, they want to know, you know, what are the health and safety issues, what are the compliance issues, how long is the... is it gonna reasonably take to correct? They tend to give that amount of time, then they tend to be very willing, if nothing's, you know, if the matter's not corrected within that amount of time, to start the multiplication process. And that's, that, in my experience, that's generally how we present it, how we go about enforcement.
So you would have to get the courts to rule in your favor first?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
The 500 dollars keeps rolling?
Yes.
So, knowing how the courts work, not as well as you guys, what would you say the time period would be before you might have that decision from a judge?
Well...
From the time you know about the violation? Let me ask this first, if there's a violation and they're, you tell them they're fined a certain amount of dollars, and they just pay the fine, then it goes away, right? Then you fix the violation?
Well, no, if they don't fix the violation, but they pay the fine, that really constitutes an admission of the violation, then we can start, we can issue a new violation if it's not correct.
Yeah, but I assume if he's gonna pay you the 500 bucks, he's gonna fix the violation, maybe.
Well, that would, I mean, and that would be the hope, because obviously, the objective is, the objective's not to continuously fine, the objective is to get compliance with, with the code requirements.
There's a clause I pulled out of, out of the Baltimore County Bill, which I wanted to read to you and find out if that's possible, that a language similar to this, doesn't have to be this exact language, could be added to this bill. And says, "In addition to the above, the county may, if it finds a violation of this article, withhold any building permits from the violator and/or issue stop work orders on work being done pursuant to the county's building permit until a violations or violator, violations or violations plural are corrected."
And so again, you're looking at building permit language, and...
Yes, this is so, I understand. I understand.
A separate enforcement avenue, this would be an additional enforcement avenue, but this was, this was specifically tailored on the land use article to give planning and zoning teeth to start enforcing their code through really a mechanism that in other jurisdictions has proved successful to achieve compliance with the zoning code. So we have put, we have made this, this bill as onerous, if you will, as the enabling legislation permits.
I've also contacted the, our Senator for this district, and I've put on an alert that we'd like to see heard in the next session, which is not next January, you know, change these provisions to raise this amount. And also, under the Hogan administration, they changed the law that read that you could, on a building permit, that you could build only 25% of the project at a time, and that has been taken out of the law, so they can just build the whole project at one time, which is what, what the big problem we're having with the 152, because they're, they not violating some, but they had their rights to do what they did. It's an R1 district, and we recently passed a law with the help of this council that in R1 districts from now on, you can only build single homes, period. That whole property is R1, but because they were, they said they were a, quote, "natural resource district," which unfortunately, from an amendment that Craig put in, that they could say that the contractors building the property could determine it was a natural resource district, and nobody could even challenge it. So that allowed them to go from building 300 single-family homes to 200 single-family homes and 188 townhomes. And what that also allowed them to do, since they took away the 25%, it allowed them to cut down the entire property at one time, which has caused us all the problems with runoff and mud in the Ramsey Island basin, so last half of summer, our kids and grandkids couldn't go swimming, it was a mess. And on top of that, they ran the, which is another big issue, they ran all the water and sewer from there all the way down into Joppa Town, past Copenhagen Park where the football field is, right alongside the football field, that's 100 yards alone right there, plus across it, another 50, down to where they had to hook all the water and sewer up. Well, when they did that, they tore down the whole embankment there that took care of the runoff, and the water would run off there and go down into the creek. Well, now what happens is, when it rains, water runs right off the hill, goes right in the football field, and the football field comes a swamp. I've taken both the county executive there and Terry Hanley from Parks and Rec there, and they've seen it, and they, they see what's wrong, and they're going after the builder, or the construction people to take care of it, and hopefully, we're gonna see a result to that. But that's my grievances, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Pembott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you both, and I'm not necessarily in opposition, I'm just trying to understand a little more. And I think Mr. Guthrie mentioned it, and I think you alluded to it too, Mr. Blumquist, do we know the surrounding jurisdictions in comparison, what their civil penalties are? Just roughly?
Some have the same. Baltimore County has a separate enabling statute. We could go to the delegation and get our own enabling law that varied the general enabling law. We haven't done that in the past, and we obviously haven't been around long enough to do that. You know, one of the other things we were thinking about, if we go to the delegation, is if we end up being in an abatement position, getting the right, but we'd have to get state enabling legislation first to do a lien for, you know, for cost of abatement that the county incurred. You know, so that's a possibility, but this would give us a start, under what we have. And that's the difference, the difference between jurisdictions is what their, what their delegation has given them by way of state enabling authority.
And I understand the importance of it, the reluctance of doing criminal and burdening the, you know, the criminal justice system, and not wanting to pursue that and having more teeth. But I did have one question on, another question, on page seven, line 16, and it's just basically about tenants or occupants, and how you kind of see that if someone is renting a piece of property, but there's a violation, they're gonna be subject to it, not necessarily the property owner, just wanna see how, how you envision that working out.
We've had situations where tenants are actually doing work in violation of the codes, and in violation of zoning regulations, doing, you know, putting on a deck, putting on improvements, doing in addition to a house. We've had situations where a tenant has, is a tenant with an option to buy and starts doing the improvements with no permits. So in a situation like that, that's where this language would allow us to go, not just after the owner, who doesn't really care one way or the other, and maybe looking, you know, may have a lease sale agreement already in place, so the tenant or the occupant becomes the real person in interest.
But you don't see, like, a tenant, if they're not complicit in the violation, you don't see, you know, having to go after them, just the property owner?
No, that doesn't, no, that doesn't make sense, but, but that's why the language is here, and that's why, that's why it includes tenant and occupant, because there are situations when the tenant or occupant is really the real party in interest.
Okay. And then just the fine range, just wanna, I think you've mentioned it, but I just wanna make sure I clarify, I understand it. And part of it's the new language and the old language. On page two, it talks about the thousand, but I think you mentioned if it's, if they're found guilty in court, you know, then it could be additional penalty each and every day. And I think it's on, the old language on page seven, "Shall be guilty of misdemeanor and shall be fined not more than 500 for each offense. Each day of containing violation shall be considered a separate misdemeanor." So that's only if they're found guilty in court that they can...
Right, if the court finds that there's a violation, then we can, we can start to assess on a daily basis. Again, you gotta use your discretion in terms of the nature of the recalcitrance and the nature of the violation, but we haven't eliminated that option, we're legally allowed that, but first, we have to establish the violation.
And I'm assuming that you've talked to the district court administrative judge to kind of, the increase on cases that they're gonna be seeing on there, did they have any insight on that as well?
No, because, no, we haven't.
Okay.
To be clear, we haven't. I mean, we have talked generally, it's not, I don't believe there's an overburdening in the district court at this point in time.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pembott. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
If we do, Mr. President, we have four this evening. John P. Malamo, followed by William Timnick.
Good evening, sir, name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland, 21015. This bill will not prevent any of the mischief residents are currently protesting. Most contentious issues originate primarily in the administration planning and zoning department. Harford County agency decisions are reviewed with tests from case law and Hauer, Chevron, and Skidmore, or DeNoble, all directly related to the Administrative Procedures Act. Deference to the agency is extended based upon those reviews. Unfortunately for Harford County residents, reviewing courts extend great deference to agency decisions, particularly where the agency is acting in a quasitative judicial capacity or on functions delegated to the agency's discretion. This leaves residents without relief. Indeed, the county is insulated by case law and Hyder and Falls Road Community Association. There is a history of questionable decision-making processes from county agencies. Ogden Court, zoning case 5922, no basis cited for direct determination. Fairview Farms, case 5585, no written process for decisions. Tire paralysis case 5886, no discussion, explanation, background, or factual findings for agency actions. EVMR, structure permitted and constructed as multifamily dwelling and then re-permitted as single-family dwelling. A similar bill, 14-1, an amendment to the zoning code adopted 18 February 2014, provided authority and discretion to the Director of Planning and Zoning to waive requirements of subsection D of Article 6, Chapter 267-39, retention and afforestation for the zoning code. Nobody could have predicted the mischief of the Glassman administration, but now Harford County is defending against actions by 14-1. As reported in the local paper, Circuit Court of Harford County recently ruled against a waiver granted by Director of Planning and Zoning for lack of substantiation. Discussion of Chapter 267-9L, penalties for failure to comply with decisions or conditions imposed by the Zoning Board of Appeals is conspicuously absent in this bill. The Zoning Board of Appeals is authorized to hear and decide any case right before it. It is the dominant agency for land use and zoning issues, planning and zoning servient. Board decisions are necessary under the code for variances, uses not permitted as of right, reclassifications, and administrative review of determination by planning and zoning. Those are remedies to civil penalties. They are the first level of review of land use and zoning issues in Harford County and critical to land use and zoning processes. If there are civil penalties for code violations, by necessity, there must be the same for failure to comply with board decisions and conditions. It is unconscionable to grant more discretionary authority to the Director of an agency with a history of selective application coupled to arbitrary and comprecious decisions. Reject this bill.
Call your next speaker.
William Timnick.
Good evening, sir, name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Bill Timnick, 425 Latimer Road, Joppa. I wanna thank council president, the council members for letting me speak, and I also wanna thank the council, the executive and the council president for introducing the bill, and Dion for meeting with the citizens to try to put something together. I'm vice president of Joppa Development Heritage Corporation. It's a 501(c)(3) with a very broad mandate to make Joppa better. I'm also chair of the water committee. I'm speaking in favor of the bill. It's terrific that the county executive and president are taking this issue seriously. And again, I thank Councilman Guthrie. I think, though, the proposed fines are ridiculously low, and the amendments needed to be added to increase the penalties for willful disobedience. We have to do the enabling authority, we probably need to look at that, too. I'm not a native of Harford County, I moved here about 20 years ago because it was a place near the waters of the Chesapeake that I could afford. I was quite excited, I could essentially walk across the street to Mariner Point Park and fish or kayak. I primarily fish from the bank on Foster Branch side of the park. I still try that maybe once a year, but there's not enough fish to make it worth a while. I walked through the pictures, then expressed my opinions of what I think we need. For those not very familiar with Joppa, I couldn't get a Google map that didn't have 700 ads, Google wouldn't. But on the west side, this whole area here is pretty much the developed. This is, this is Mariner Point Park, this is Foster Branch as it goes into the developed. And we'll show some other pictures later, but basically, 80% of this area's now been developed, trying to put 400 odd homes, 388 to 400 homes in there, and they just leveled it. I mean, they left a couple of pieces, a couple of trees up, not much more than that. Foster Branch is those little blue squiggles running through, which comes out on one side of Mariner Point Park, goes into, joins with Town Creek, into the small gunpowder, the birds, and the Gunpowder River. Next page is what water looks like normally, at the end of the pier, at the south end of the pier at Mariner Point Park. It's kind of blue-green. It's not, it's not a trout stream, it's the Chesapeake Bay, it's tidal water, but it's blue-green. Picture below it is what it looks like coming out of Foster Branch. You can even see the line where the two waters meet. That orange, brown sludge, whatever you wanna call it, I was in a training for how to do water testing, I was down at Oliver Branch, because we're gonna do a Northern Bay, Chesapeake Bay test, and they were complaining about our water, because it went all the way down If you switch pages, this is Foster Branch where homes are, it's tidal here. Goes, this is from...
Mr. Timnick, please read your comments till close, you're about out of time, and you are out of time.
I didn't have five minutes?
Three minutes.
I'm speaking for an organization?
Three minutes, sir. It's been three minutes for quite some time.
Fair enough.
But we do have your documentation, we'll all take a look at it. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Bill Whalen, followed by Ralph Kamegna.
Bill Whalen, 415 Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland, 21015. I'm against bill 23023 at this time. It's a rewrite of 123 of the Harford Code and changes 26714A and C of the zoning code. As presently written, it provides only for a county department where it's authorized as a need, the complete authority and discretion to pose a fine, issue the citations for violations of any of our resolution rule or regulation. There's no mention of imposition of fines and issuing citations for non-compliance of Board of Appeals' final decision. The Law Department has interpreted the zoning code that the Board of Appeals has no enforcement authority, the executive branch is not obligated to enforce the decisions of the Board of Appeals, and pursuit of enforcement actions are a policy left to the discretion of the executive branch. I don't find this defined anywhere in the code, charter, or zoning code. It should be rejected until such time the administration and county council meet to clearly define the powers and duties of the Board of Appeals, county council, and the administration, Director of Planning, as the enforcement authority. The zoning code, in my opinion, contains ambiguous language and has created past problems. You have a disconflict between 267-9B and 269L, and it can be interpreted that the Board of Appeals does have authority to enforce its decisions. Fortunately, I'm able to finally get a meeting with some administration members with the help of Ms. Foley in mid-July. Harford County has existing rules and procedures for processing and hearing applications in zoning cases. Under this process, PNC sends the appeals request to the hearing examiner with their recommendations, requests made. The staff report is information purposes only, and findings in a Board of Appeals case is a decision of the hearing examiner alone. If there are no appeals, decision is... If there are no appeals, the decision is the final decision of the county and takes precedence over any recommendations made by the Director of Planning and Zoning. Final decisions made by the Board of Appeals cannot be simply ignored or arbitrarily dismissed, especially when it's been proven by finding of fact and conclusions of law, the Director of Planning himself made an obvious error in his or her final determination. This is a violation of code and law. I suggest you reject the bill until changes are made to 267.7, 267.9, and 267.14 to clearly define the power and authority of the county council, the administration, as relating to zoning decisions enforcement. Make it clear that the Board of Appeals' final decisions take precedence and enforcement by planning and zoning of those decisions is a code requirement. It's totally wrong and has been, as I've seen in some cases, for a citizen to have to be forced to go to the judicial system to get appointed officials to perform their job that are required by their respective positions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Ralph Comegna. I live at 34 Neptune Job Drive in Joppa. Speaking on behalf of myself tonight and in support of the bill. I know it may not be perfect, but I feel like we need to start somewhere. I moved to Ramsey Island 11 years ago and have seen the steady and consistent degradation of our water quality as a direct result of inadequate and unforced requirements on developers. As each new development has begun and now has been converted into homes, the damages have persisted to the point that they are irreparable and unforgivable. Today, developers do not change their actions as a result of insufficient deterrence and lack of enforcement. As a community, I don't think we want to be anti-business, but we do want to be pro-environment. As we clearly understand the connection between our environment and our health, we would like to see the following: penalties and fines that act as a stronger deterrent, up to and including the loss of a license to practice for repeat offenders. If the penalty doesn't hurt, quite frankly, behavior does not change. A more aggressive and consistent enforcement effort by the departments that represent us and work for us on our behalf. Most of the development in this county occurs inside the development envelope, which contains the vast majority of our natural waterways to the bay. We simply cannot wait any longer to turn this tide. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers. Mr. President.
With no other speakers, this will conclude the public hearing on bill 23-023, and will be taken up at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill 23-024, zoning certificate. Mr. Grimm.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to let Mr. Truitt take the lead on this one.
Mr. Truitt.
Thank you, Council President, facility members of the council, Rich Truitt, Director of Inspectorial Permits, and obviously, along with me, Shane Grimm, Director of Planning and Zoning. Tenet bill 2324 is to address a coordination issue between the issuance of a zoning certificate for a project when it's required to have a building permit. It's been a longstanding practice of the county that an issued building permit by DILP also includes a zoning certificate required by 267. To ensure that all applicable agencies are provided an opportunity to review and approve a building permit application, Chapter 82 of the county code requires that all applicable laws be adhered to prior to the building permit issuance. So agencies such as zoning, Department of Public Works, Health Department, are all solicited for their input and approval upon building permit application. The intergovernmental permitting system has been programmed to address the practice and includes built-in fail safes to require agency approvals prior to issuing the building permit. Last year, in a review of Chapter 267 and Chapter 82 of the county code, it was identified that updates to Chapter 267 should be made to specifically clarify this practice. While we are unable to find justification or documentation made by prior administration to initiate the practice, it is clear that the intent of combining the two documents decades ago was done to establish a more efficient and streamlined permitting process. This practice has served the county well. It is our intent, and with your approval of the bill, to continue the practice, and we ask for your favorable vote to make the change to 267. This time, Mr. Grimm and I will be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Truitt. Counsel, any questions? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have two. John Malamo, followed by Bill Whalen.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. I still live at 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland, 21015. Using two cases to demonstrate the inadequacies of this bill and basis for rejection. First, the situation at Ogden Court. Five building permits were issued for buildings described as single-family dwelling units. A certificate of occupancy was issued for each building. In zoning case 5922, the hearing examiner decided that the buildings were in a use materially similar to a personal care boarding home, permitted by special exception. That decision was not appealed and has not been enforced. Now, there is no building permit to revoke. The situation could only be cured by revoking a zoning certificate. In this case, a zoning certificate could not be lawfully issued as there has been no hearing for a special exception. Indeed, the current request for a building permit is curious as the facility is operating without any clear zoning use designation. This bill does not address the situation. The second case would be the accessory uses at Harford County Airport. Code is quite clear. Generally, except as otherwise restricted by this Part 1 customary accessory uses and structures shall be permitted in any district in connection with the principal permitted use within such district. Appropriate airport accessory uses such as restaurants, snack bars, automobile rental agencies, airline business offices, and service facilities, but not other businesses or industrial uses may be permitted. Skydiving introduced on the airport's MAA license in 2013 required Board of Appeals' approval. None was issued. Best described as a business and amusement, skydiving is not permitted now. Fuel was stored and sold while the airport was a nonconforming use. As a permitted use, fuel, storage, and sale would not be permitted as adjacent properties are not on public water. The drone unmanned aerial test facility determined to be developing, researching, and testing of unmanned aerial vehicles, prevent zones, and a permitted use by planning and zoning. This would be an industrial use not permitted by the zoning code. To my knowledge, zoning certificates were never issued for these accessory uses. Operating out of a zoning certificate would itself be unlawful. Now, as a result, they cannot be nonconforming uses. The zoning code has no legal description of grandfathering process prescribed in this bill. The process described in Chapter 267-4 defining a nonconforming use, building, structure, or lot, applies. By law, a nonconforming building, structure, or lot may continue, but would be regulated as prescribed in Part 1, Article 4, Chapter 267 of the zoning code. This leaves three questions. Who determines the lawful status of all accessory uses currently operating? What are the regulatory requirements for resultant nonconforming uses? Who enforces decisions of the Board of Appeals? Until this issue is resolved, the operations of the Board of Appeals should be suspended, and all pending cases stayed.
Yes, this is round three. Bill Whalen, 415 Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland. I really had some trouble distinguishing some differences between the building permit and the zoning certificate requirement. The application form is the same, and it was revised in 12322. After the explanation provided, I think I have a better understanding of what the bill attempts to accomplish. However, after listening to Mr. Malamo's comments, I did recognize some inadequacies on the bill and being valid. I can really relate to his comments of the situation at Ogden Court and zoning case 5922. Been involved with it for five years, trying to get the administration to comply with the zoning requirements for permitted use. The Board of Appeals' decision in case 59 was very clear. Concluded the Director of Planning was aired in his final determination, and the Ogden Court homes were used as single-family homes. He concluded the permitted use as a personal care boarding home required a special exception. Unfortunately, this decision was ignored, not enforced by the then-director, and the facility continues to operate unlawfully and without any approved use designation. It's my understanding the administration can't resolve this matter until it'll fall because of other priorities. So until such time this issue is resolved and changes are made, again, to define the enforcement authority of the Board of Appeals' final decision, I believe this bill should be put aside until that time. Additionally, I believe the issues and questions by Mr. Malamo are cause for rejection as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no more speakers, this will conclude the public hearing for bill 23-024, and it will be taken up at a future meeting. Thank you, gentlemen. Bill 23-020, revise prior year bond bills. Mr. Salas, Mr. Stalford. Good evening, gentlemen.
Council President, with your permission, may we speak to all three of the bond bills?
Yes, please.
On behalf of the county executive, asking the councils to consider three bond bills. The first is bill number 20, which revises prior bond bills. This is what you would see in our budget as any time we reallocate bonds from prior years. Bill 21 deals with CPI, which is our taxpayer-supported debt. Those are debt projects that are really ultimately funded with taxpayer proceeds. And then bills 22, which deals with water and sewer debt, which are paid for by the rate payers, the users of the water and sewer system. Then I'll turn it over to our bond counsel, John Stalford, and then I'll talk a little bit about the projects when he's done.
Thank you, Mr. Salas. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. John Stalford with Miles and Stockbridge, bond counsel to the county. Bill number 2320 repeals and reenacts with amendment certain sections of legislation previously enacted by the county council in 2017, 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022 for certain of the county's capital projects to reflect, in some cases, reduced costs and reallocation of those reductions amongst other approved capital projects, but in all events, no more in totals than previously approved. All right. Moving on to bill 2321. This bill authorizes the county to issue its general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $94 million, $90,000, the proceeds of which will be used to fund the county's capital program. The bill describes the various capital projects that Mr. Salas will describe in greater detail that have been included in the county's approved 2024 capital program and capital budget and the respective amounts to be funded with the proceeds of those bonds. In addition to the maximum principal amount of bonds, the bill further provides a maximum maturity of 20 years and sets forth the amortization schedule, subject to change by the council. The bill provides that prior to the issuance of the bonds, the county council shall determine by administrative resolution the essential terms and details of the bonds, including the rates of interest on the bonds. To the extent that recordation and transfer taxes are insufficient to pay debt service on these bonds, the county's full faith and credit and taxing powers are pledged to secure the repayment of the bonds pursuant to the bill. The bill further provides for the public sale of the bonds and the procedures for such sale, including the form of notice of sale. Lastly, the bill further provides that instead of a public sale of bonds for financing certain of the capital projects for stormwater projects, the indebtedness may be incurred pursuant to loans from the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration in an amount not to exceed $8 million, $600,000. That amount is included within the $94 million, $90,000 maximum principal amount for all indebtedness. These stormwater projects and the respective amounts of each are described in the bill. And in the event that the dedicated source of revenues established by the county for such loans are insufficient, the county's full faith and credit and taxing power are also pledged to secure such loans. Lastly, we have bill 2322, which authorizes the county to issue its general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $8 million, $500,000, the proceeds of which will be used to fund the county's water and sewer projects. Again, the bill describes the various projects that have been included in the county's approved 2024 capital program and budget and the respective amounts to be funded. This is all very similar to the capital projects that I just described with respect to bill 2321. Maximum maturity of these bonds is 20 years. Amortization schedule is set forth. Again, the county council shall determine by administrative resolution the essential terms of these bonds, including the rate of interest. And in the event that funds from the operation of the water and sewer projects designated for the payment of debt service on the bonds are insufficient, the county's full faith and credit and taxing powers are pledged to secure the repayment of the bonds. Public sale of the bonds is authorized pursuant to procedures outlined in the bill, including the form of notice of sale. And again, the bill authorizes an alternative to a public sale of the bonds for financing all of the water and sewer projects. The indebtedness may be incurred pursuant to loans from the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration in an amount not to exceed $8 million, $500,000. Again, the full faith and credit of the county will be pledged to secure those loans in the event that funds from the operation of those projects designated for payment of debt service on the loans are insufficient.
Mr. Salas? So we do bring forth these bond bills each and every year. They're normally companion bills, I should say, to the budget process. Normally, by this point, the budget has been passed, and then this is kind of after the fact. In this case, the presentation is before the budget's going to be passed. But what you will find is that all of the projects listed in all three of these bond bills correspond to the budget that you'll take up later on this evening. So if it is anything in the budget that shows either new bonds or prior bonds appropriated, these three pieces of legislation and the projects listed therein correspond to that budget. Now, normally, the actual bond sale, when we sell these actual projects, it may in fact be several years later, just because of the timing of bond sales. We talked about in the past, the county is in a position that we normally do not sell bonds until we've actually incurred the expenditures that enables us to save on interest payments. It also allows us to avoid any potential arbitrage issues or anything along the lines of... There's a whole host of IRS rules and regulations that deal with the use of bond proceeds, and so that's one of the ways that we are able to maintain that. So the bonds that you see authorized here will be authorized here hopefully next week. It probably in many cases won't necessarily be sold for a few years until those projects get underway. So just to talk a little bit about some of the three areas. In the prior bond bills that are being re-appropriated, most of those are in the DPW section centered on stormwater management, highways, and water and sewer. And oftentimes, you'll have projects that, for kind of a host of different reasons, have unspent or unsold bonds on them, ranging from, there was savings on the project to maybe the project was deferred or things along those lines, and then they're reallocated to other projects. Again, almost all of those are on the DPW area. Others, a little bit for schools as well. The big one is bill 21, which deals with any of the new bonds that are being budgeted. That is the $94 million number. Of that $94 million of new taxpayer-supported bonds, about half of it is for school projects, a little bit more than $42 million for school projects. And those would include the Harford Academy major project, $16 million there. Harford Tech renovation at about $11.5 million, and the Aberdeen Middle School HVAC project that's just shy of $8 million. Also, related to that is the Chesapeake Welcome Center at the Community College for $10.8 million. Then other significant projects, site acquisition, which actually goes in with a lot of school acquiring properties for schools, as well as other for county uses as well. This is another significant project, as is various watershed management projects. We have about $8.6 million in there for watershed management projects. And again, all of those will be funded with taxpayer-supported. They're all taxpayer-supported debt. We do use recordation and transfer tax to pay for as much of the school debt as we can, and then the rest of them are paid for with kind of general tax dollars. On the water and sewer side, the $8.5 million there, again, that is only paid for by individuals who use the water and sewer system, either from their initial hookup fees or, if that's insufficient, operating costs. So if you're not on the water and sewer system, you do not pay for that debt service. And if you are on the water and sewer system, this goes to improve that system. And you... and you have at some point paid into that. And that's $8.5 million with some significant projects there, being the SCADA Information Management System, the SOD1 wastewater plant ultraviolet disinfection, as well as the Abingdon Water Treatment Plant Generator as well, and the Maryland Transportation I-95 improvements as well. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sanless. Counsel, anyone with any questions? Mr. Pennman?
Mr. Sanless, thank you. On Bill 2320, page 10, it has the Hartford County Sheriff's Office, Central Precinct and Training Facility. So if it's budgeted, are we moving forward with that project?
So how the, that project was, received bond appropriation during those budget years, and it's more or less just listed because it's part of the legislation? So only where you would see, what is it? It's italics or bold?
It's in brackets.
Yeah, brackets or bold is where you'd see any changes. So you'll see a lot of bits of prior legislation that's unchanged. And so if that's the case, as is the case with the Sheriff's Office Training Center, there is no change on the bond authorization there. So we can only use proceeds for projects that are listed. So we couldn't just use those bonds for another project. So if ever those projects were to, any bonds were to be taken off of a project, that would need to come to council for approval, as we're doing here with those projects that are being changed, such as, I know like one of the more significant ones is the Norrisville DPW area, and there's a couple of other water and sewer projects. So no change to the Sheriff's Training Center. That budget remains intact as it was before.
So it's on hold, to my understanding. Is there any other projects in this bond bill that are also on hold, other than the precinct?
Well, I do know that there's been talk with the, some of the recreation centers that we've been working with in Aberdeen and looking at other forms of redesigning those. So that's another project that is still being studied as well. I can't think of anyone else off the top of my head. But oftentimes, with a lot of our capital projects, it does take a while sometimes, just for a whole host of reasons, manpower, supply chain issues, questions as to design. So that it, like, we look at what we just recently sold this past winter. A lot of those projects were from fiscal years 20 and 21 and 19. So there oftentimes is a delay in, as far as when the projects are actually sold.
I think this one, to my understanding, it's ready to go out to bid. It's already designed. So is there any other in that category that is being held up?
That, again, I know that with the Aberdeen Recreation Center, we've been looking at that one, and that one's been also doing some redesign work. I can't, I don't know if there's any other ones. I'd have to get back to you on that. But I know those two projects have been, those two projects have been held, more or less.
But I think that one, the Aberdeen one, that we just got a letter from the county executive, and we got a letter from the mayor of Aberdeen. I think there is some contention on how large of a footprint they want. That's why that's being held up. This one is nowhere near that same situation.
Yeah, I mean, again, there can be a host of reasons for why a project, you know, isn't moving. I mean, and we have talked about that project a lot. I mean, we know that the county executive has questions on it and has gone back and forth with that. But the budget remains intact. So again, those budgeted funds, you know, can only really be used for that project unless they are moved. But you're not necessarily, on the executive side, is not required to move on them. It kind of sets a ceiling. You can spend and you can use it for these budgeted projects, but you don't necessarily have to move forward, you know, at any certain speed.
I understand that. Just the last thing. So that Aberdeen Community Center aside, this is the only project that's being held up?
Yeah, I mean, I have to get back to you. I don't know if there may be some other ones. I mean, obviously, that is probably the most significant one. There may, oftentimes, bridges and things like that are sometimes held up for easement purposes and all. There are a few projects that are as probably in the public discourse and in the public eye in the way that that project is. But like Hartford Academy has been, and Homestead Wakefield, it's been another project where it's been held up due to the road issue in with Bel Air. And again, you could say that's an outside force and the like. The Hartford Academy project has been somewhat held up because of, you know, questions as to being in the priority funding area. So there are, again, a host of reasons why projects do get held up. But this one is probably in a unique...
I would agree. Thank you, Mr. Sanless.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up to any?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Well, this will conclude the public hearings for 2320, 23-021, and 23-022. We'll take them up at another time. Thank you. Counsel, if I may, let's take a short recess. Good evening, Chair. Cause order legislative session day 23-020. Please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilmember Pennman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father, for the living, powerful word of God. We pray that your Spirit continue to convict, comfort, and conform us to the image that you want us to be. We live in a world built on shifting sand, and we need your help to lift up our eyes on you. Lord, help us clear out the distractions and focus on your words and ways. Thank you for your love, for your grace that enables us, and your Spirit that empowers us. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Counsel, if I may, before we get started, I'd like to recognize the Honorable Alex Allman in the chambers with us this evening. Good to see you, Your Honor. Agenda Number Four, Presentation of Proclamations. We have none. Five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Executive Appointment, Hartford County Community Mediation Commission may have a motion.
Counsel President, I move to approve the new appointment of the Honorable Alex Allman.
Thank you. May I have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved in a second to approve the appointment of Alex Allman to the Community Mediation Commissioners. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Paul Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Congratulations, Your Honor. I think it's congratulations, anyway. Agenda Number Six, Special Presentations. Auditor update. Ms. Brooks? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. So as you mentioned, for the record, my name is Crystal Brooks. I'm the county auditor. So periodically, I come before you all to let you know how things are going in my office. So I will, I've sent over the information that is the update, but I will walk you through it pretty quickly and leave you all time to ask questions if you have any. So of the projects we had planned for fiscal year 2023, the first one that we worked on was petty cash. There are several departments that have cash on hand for different reasons. We looked at nine petty cash funds over the summer. Of all those, all of the money was what we expected it to be. There was no cash missing or anything. For one of the funds, we found that they were not reporting timely their petty cash to Treasury. It's supposed to be done at least once a month in the case of highways and maintenance. They were doing it less often because they just had enough money to not need a replenishment. Still, the requirement is that they have, that they report how much they've spent every 30 days. And so management agreed that they would make sure that they were doing it as frequently as needed. We also, every year, go through and review the status of prior audit findings to find out if the recommendations we've made or that management has agreed that they're going to make are actually implemented. At the time, which was in August, there were seven recommendations that were closed and nine that remain open for follow-up. We're actually just starting our follow-up to prior audit findings now. We're working on the planning for that now. So those nine remaining open items will end up in our review that we're starting now. So we'll update you all as we get through that project. We did an audit related to fleet maintenance management. We completed that in April. There were two findings that resulted from the audit. The first was related to monitoring vehicle use. Our expectation was that departments had a good idea of, you know, who had a vehicle at any given time, where they were going, what they were doing with it. There would be logs. We found that most of the departments that we got in touch with were not keeping such a formal system. It seemed that it was related to there being new fleet liaisons in some of the departments, and that maybe they just didn't know the procedures. We recommended management that they have training for all the new fleet liaisons that have been assigned. We also noted in that audit that for six of the vehicles we tested, the preventive maintenance was performed late, so meaning more than 60 days late. I think three of the six were vehicles that were operated by the community college. The others were just things that happened during pandemic times. Management, well, fleet management sends out notices to user departments about when their vehicles are due for maintenance. And so they sent follow-up reminders to find out, hey, you haven't come in to get your maintenance. But for a few of them, sometimes they took longer. All the maintenance that was required was eventually done. The financial statement audits for fiscal year 2022 were completed. The financial statements received an unmodified opinion, and you all have seen that report several months ago. But also, the county's audit of, well, county's single audit, so the audit of federal funds, was completed. There was one reported issue, but I believe it was corrected when it was noticed. Additionally, the audits of the county's affiliated agencies was completed. And so we made sure that all of the volunteer fire companies, and then some of the outside agencies that are not included in the county's financial statements, that those entities had their financial statements audited. We didn't find any issues to note with any of those. We completed an audit of banking and investment controls. It was a pretty straightforward project, just to make sure that Treasury has a good idea of what money is coming and going from its bank accounts, that they know when they are investing money, where it's going, when they expect it to come back, what the rates of returns are supposed to be, and that the accounting related to all of those things is correct. There were no issues reported in that audit. We did an audit of the inventory controls for Department of Public Works. It was a pretty complicated audit. There were, because there are so many divisions within Public Works, they have different functions and different needs. So in the end, we had three findings that we reported. The first was that the county normally requires departments, when they buy something that costs more than $500, if it's a thing, that they put an inventory tag on it. They report it to Facilities Operations, and it gets an inventory number. We found that the highways maintenance division was not doing it. They had a different system that they were working with. But the county's requirement for those things to be included in Facilities and Operations inventory system wasn't happening. Management advised that they are going to work with Facilities and Operations to make sure all those things get added. We also noted that within water and sewer, the procedures were not consistent across the bureaus. So there were some efficiencies that, for example, they had at the sewer facility SOD run that they maybe could implement at the water and sewer maintenance shop, and vice versa. Management acknowledged that the procedures are not necessarily consistent, but that they don't fully expect them to be, which is reasonable conclusion. They did note that they're going to work on making sure that their procedures are more thoroughly documented in each of those bureaus so that, you know, as people retire and people just leave county service, that there is some information to help the next folks come along and be able to know what they're supposed to be doing. The last finding that we included in that project was related to access to CityWorks, which is the system that has the work orders for Public Works. We noted that there were a couple of generic user accounts that could be used. We found that they hadn't been, and they were disabled when it was pointed out. But we recommended that management go through and review its processes for how access to systems is disabled to make sure that the database administrators know when someone has left county service and also that they're just doing periodic reviews of who has access to what. So that was Public Works inventory. The county charter requires that when an official dies, resigns, or is removed from their office, that we'll do an exit audit. So this year was an election year. So we reviewed the county council, all of the council members who were on the council where the state are left, the county executive, and then department heads and deputy directors who left any of the executive departments. We reviewed all of those officials. There were no, there were nothing that indicated that anybody owed anything to the county or that anyone's, anyone had ongoing access to systems or to assets or buildings or anything like that. We also, because staff changes, there have been four other exit audits that we've done outside of those that happened around the time of the inauguration. They were for the Director of Procurement, the Emergency Services Director, the county attorney, and the Deputy Director of Community Services. And again, for all of them, we found no indebtedness related to their separations. We completed an audit of grant and aid award and monitoring controls in April. There was one finding that resulted from that audit. It is one that's been repeated in prior audits of grants, and it essentially is that the county gives out money in the form of grants, which normally requires whoever's receiving the money to sign a grant agreement, which details the terms that they have. So, you know, what are they supposed to be doing with the money? What reporting is required, et cetera? The county also has contributions, which are more discretionary. So they don't have a grant agreement. It's basically somebody says, hey, can I have some money? And somebody says, sure, here's some money. It goes out the door. There's no follow-up required related to that. The problem we found is that those two categories are not necessarily always used in that way so that when you look at the accounting records, it's not clear to see which money the county has given away that requires some follow-up, some monitoring procedures, and which doesn't. Essentially, we found some things that were labeled contributions, but were really grants. So we needed to look at the grant agreements and the monitoring controls. And then also some things that were labeled grants, but they were really just contributions. Management says they are working on fixing that. They've moved all of the grant and aid categories of grant and aid to community development. Also, tourism is changing how those grants are being awarded and the monitoring controls related to that. So management expects that the issue will be addressed through their systems. We completed an audit of license issuance and billing controls. Basically, we just wanted to make sure that when someone gets a professional license or a dog license, that they have gone through all of the steps that are required for that license. They've provided whatever documentation is needed. If it's a professional license, that they've shown that they've got reciprocal experience, either with another county or through the state licensing systems. There were no issues that we found in that audit. Things were as we expected them to be. We also did an audit of zoning requests. This was to see when people requested zoning certificates or filed an appeal with the Board of Appeals, that all of the required steps were taken and that all of the required fees were collected. Again, there were no issues that we reported coming out of that audit. Hotel occupancy tax. We are working on that project now. Earlier in the year, we added a hotel that just needs to be audited earlier in the year. We found that the hotel operator was not paying regularly. But when we did the audit, we found that they had actually overpaid in some cases. So they were behind, but also overpaid. It mostly balanced out, whatever the case is, they cleared things up when we did that audit. There are four other hotels that we're going to work on their audits in the next month or so. So you all should see reports on that in July. We are actually postponing an audit of recruitment and hiring practices at management's request. We're going to push that project back to August. So I would expect to report on it in October. We have water and sewer billing system controls. That is a project we are just getting into the fieldwork phase of. We expect to issue a report on that in August. And finally, purchase card controls. We look at purchase cards. We look at purchase card controls all year, throughout the year, every year. So that project is always in progress, but we do wrap it up with a report every year. And so you all should see that report in August. So that's all, everything that's in the audit plan. I will add to that. Audit Advisory Board continues to meet. Our next meeting is going to be August 22nd here in this building, on the second floor at 4:30. It's a public meeting. I would also add that we need one more citizen member of the advisory board. So if you know anyone who's got financial or audit experience in their background, if you would invite them to visit the county auditor webpage and apply, that would be great, because we need one more citizen. So that's all I've got. I can answer any questions you all have.
Crystal, I want to thank you for the work that you do every day, you and your team, you Brad and Heather. You do a great job. The scope and volume of what you do on a regular basis is a tough task. There's no question about that. The average citizen has no idea what all you guys dive into on both sides of the street. You do follow the school system as well. So I appreciate that, and I'm sure you'll hear similar things from my colleagues. Counsel, anyone? Mr. Guthrie?
You didn't find that any of the people who left office took any top secrets home, did you?
I'm not sure how many top secrets the county government has, but no, we did not have that, and we did not find that to be the case.
Is that it? Mr. Janjordano?
Crystal, this is phenomenal. So I know it's a lot of hard work. It's a lot of effort, and I thank you for keeping us informed all year long. Just going over this real quick, seeing some of the stuff in there, and I see one of the big things that the county is absorbing is the increase in healthcare costs, which is 7%. A lot of people don't realize that. I know we've got some wages coming shortly, 1.5% now, 1.5% in July. But just want to make sure everybody realizes that the 7% increase cost, cost in healthcare is being absorbed by the, by the county. I could tell you this, I, I see it all the time. You know, a family health insurance plan is, is upwards of almost $3,000 a month. It's unaffordable for a lot of small businesses and people in business, so it is a great benefit to a lot of the county employees. They just don't know, not only county employees, but school, school system doesn't realize the cost of healthcare insurance if they had to go out in the market and pay for it for themselves. It's quite, quite expensive, so I just want to make sure I make that point. And thank you for this very much.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Anyone else? Seeing no one else. Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes. Public hearing, June 6th, 2023. Legislative Day 23-019, June 6th, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Counsel, if there are no objections, we will move to Agenda Item 10, introduction and consideration of amendments through 12, enrollment of bills. And at the completion of Agenda Item 12, we will move back to Agenda Item 8, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Agenda number 10, introduction and consideration of amendments. Amendments 1 through 9 to Bill 23-011. Apartments B3, General Business District. May I have a motion?
Counsel President, I move to approve amendments number 1 through 9 to Bill 23-011.
May I have a second? May I have a second? One more time, may I have a second? It's been moved in second to approve amendments 1 through 9 to Bill 23-011. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I'm against these amendments. I consider them unfriendly to the original purpose of the bill, which is to say, if you want to build apartments in the B3 district, then it needs to be done through having mixed-use development. You know, we talked ad nauseam about the benefits of mixed-use development. But, you know, I also want to point out the harms of not purposefully doing mixed-use development when you're talking about this type of development. You know, if you look at communities in Bellecamp, where you have a large swath of apartments that are completely choked off from any sort of community by large roadways. So you have people who live a football's throw away from their elementary school and have to take a bus because there's no other way to get there. They can see the grocery store from their house, but they have to own a car to get to it. When we don't purposefully encourage business and residential to be side-by-side and integrated with each other, we make housing that's unfriendly to those who live in it. And the whole point of this legislation that we talked about was to encourage high-quality, high-density development that is walkable, that is less costly on road impact, because people are getting what they need without having to get into a car. And in the long run, that if it's built, you know, the residents who live there are profitable towards the county instead of being a large expense. You know, somebody who has to drive 20 minutes to their job, 20 minutes to the grocery store, that's expensive on road repairs and maintenance to the community. And by adding these amendments into the bill, it's essentially gutting that purpose and saying, you know, as long as you're next to a business on a different, you know, property, then you can still build apartments, instead of encouraging this use of mixed-use development. And I just struggle to understand why Councilmember Pennman is introducing this, what the benefit is. You know, if the point is you're against the bill, then just vote against the bill. But to introduce an amendment that guts the purpose of the bill, I just see as an unfriendly action, and I would rather, you know, vote down the amendments. And then if you're against the bill, vote no on the bill. But to amend the bill in a way that nullifies its purpose, I'm just against that.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for your concerns. And I never said I was against the bill. The bill's coming up next week, and there is, there is a good possibility I would vote in favor of the bill. The purpose of this amendment introduced to Bill 2311 is based off the mixed-use center principles, which is encouraged by the county's administration in the current zoning code. Mixed-use centers create harmonious communities that reduce the burden on local infrastructure, such as road use and traffic congestion, meaning if infrastructure such as, excuse me, meaning if the residents of these communities can walk and utilize nearby residents, entertainment, businesses, restaurants, it creates a closer and more interconnected community, subsequently strengthening our local economy. The amendment introduced to Bill 2311 is an extension of the mixed-use center philosophy, requiring the mixed-use center to be adjacent and of substantial size. If passed, the amendment could be beneficial to B3 zoning classifications across the entire county.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? Mr. Janjordano?
So part of that bill adds a, if it's a commercial retail containing an excess of 50,000 square feet, you can put an apartment complex on there, which then doesn't mean it conforms to the, to the building that they have to do in the B3. I just think adding 50, adding an amendment to add a piece of land next to a mixed-use to build an apartment complex should not be allowed. I'm not for the amendments. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Sodles?
Yes, thank you. I would like to state that I am generally concerned with the piecemeal nature of the zoning code amendments that we've been receiving. I've been here a short time, but there's been a lot of changes. And I think that at this point, we probably need to have a full, comprehensive review of the zoning code, and maybe it's time that a new code is implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Pass.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
No.
Mr. Riley?
No.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Vince, Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. President, point of order?
Yes.
Can you give me the breakdown?
So it is at this point in time, 2, 3, 4, and 3 against.
I believe it's 3, 3.
That's what I'm saying. 3, 4, and 3 against.
Yeah, oh, I thought you meant 3 and then the number 4.
Let go of my ears, Mr. Kearney.
So I apologize.
Let go of my ears. So the bill has 3 in affirmative, 4 in the negative. Amendments 1 through 9 to Bill 23-011 have failed. Amendments to Bill 23-013, EMS ambulance transport increase rates. Amendment 8, at the request of the executive, has been withdrawn. Amendments 1 through 7 and Amendments 9 through 16. May I have a motion?
I move to approve Amendments 1 through 7 and 9 through 16.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve the Amendments 1 through 7 and 9 through 16. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Abstained.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Bill 23-13?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being 5 votes in the affirmative, 1 in a negative, and 1 abstention, the Amendments 1 through 7 and 9 through 16 to Bill 23-013 are hereby approved. Amendment 17 to Bill 23-013. Mr. Janjordano?
Amendment number 17, introduced by Counsel President Vincenti at the request of the county executive, on page 3, strike beginning with, in quotations, "and" in line 9, down through municipalities, in quotations, in line 17 inclusive.
Thank you. Counsel, this amendment will be considered this evening. May I have a motion?
Counsel President, I move to approve Amendment 17.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in seconded to approve Amendment 17 to Bill 23-013. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie? Mr. Pennman?
Abstained.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being 5 votes in the affirmative, 1 negative, 1 abstention, Amendment 17 to Bill 23-013 is hereby approved. Amendments to Bill 23-014, annual appropriation ordinance. Mr. Janjordano, please read Amendments 59 through 90, what is that, 97, into the record for introduction.
Introduced by Counsel President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. Amendment number 59, on page 7 and line 8, strike $63,512,089, and substitute $74,072,089, to balance, fund balance appropriated from Amendments 11, 13, and 15. Amendment number 60, on page 7 and line 22, strike $757,936,000, and substitute $768,496,000, to balance total estimated revenues available for appropriation general fund for a total increase of $10,560,000. Amendment number 61, on page 15 and line 11, strike $757,936,000, and substitute $768,496,000, to balance total appropriations general fund for a total increase of $10,560,000. Amendment number 62, on page 29 and line 15, strike $955,200,000, and substitute $965,562,000, to balance total operating budget appropriations for a total increase of $10,560,000. Amendment number 63, on page 35 and line 18, strike $5,196,400, substitute $25,878,042, to balance other funding from Amendments 37, 39, 41, 43, 45, 47, 49, 51, 53, 55, and 57. Amendment number 64, on page 35 and line 20, strike $1,741,119,000, and substitute $200,657,642, to balance total estimated revenues available for appropriation general capital fund for a total increase of $26,538,642. Amendment number 65, on page 37 and line 24, strike $450,000, and substitute $4,700,000, to balance the Board of Education capital project fleet replacement from Amendments 42 and 58. Amendment number 66, on page 37 and lines 38, strike $174,119,000, and substitute $200,657,642, to balance total appropriations general capital fund for a total increase of $26,538,642. Amendment number 67, on page 40 and line 11, strike $1,790,000, and substitute?
That's $11 million, sorry.
That is. $11,790,000, and substitute $15,190,000, to balance total estimated revenues available for appropriation parks and recreation capital fund for a total increase of $3,400,000. Amendment number 68, on page 40 and line 34, strike $11,790,000, and substitute $15,190,000, to balance total appropriations parks and recs capital fund for a total increase of $3,400,000. Amendment number 69, on page 41 and line 6, strike 0 and substitute 0, to balance prior bonds from Amendments 25 and 27. Amendment number 70, on page 41 and line 8, strike $3,786,000, and substitute $4,738,000, to balance total estimated revenue available for appropriation sewer capital fund for a total increase of $214,738. Amendment number 71, on page 41 and line 18, strike $499,964, and substitute $500,738, to balance the water and sewer capital project pumping station improvements from Amendments 28 and 30. Amendment number 72, on page 41 and line 22, strike $3,786,000, and substitute $4,738,000, to balance total appropriations sewer capital fund for a total increase of $214,738. Amendment number 73, on page 42 and line 6, strike 0 and substitute 0, to balance prior bonds from Amendments 31 and 33. Amendment number 74, on page 42 and line 8, strike $12,650,000, and substitute $12,838,620, to balance the total estimated revenues available for appropriation water capital fund for a total increase of $188,620. Amendment number 75, on page 42 and line 18, strike $2256,992, and substitute $2256,992, to balance the water sewer capital project renewal and replacement water infrastructure from Amendments 34 and 36. Amendment number 76, on page 42 and line 26, strike $12,650,000, and substitute $12,838,620, to balance total appropriations water capital fund for a total increase of $188,620. Amendment number 77, on page 43 and line 16, strike $229,305,000, and substitute $259,647,000, to balance the total all capital budget appropriations budget appropriations for a total increase of thirty million three hundred and forty-two thousand. Amendment number seventy-eight on page forty-four and line seven, strike seven hundred and twenty-six million nine hundred and seven thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars, and substitute seven hundred and twenty-one million nine hundred and seven thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars, to balance twenty-twenty-three expenditures estimated for a total increase of five million dollars. Amendment number seventy-nine on page forty-four and line sixteen, strike thirty-seven million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred, and substitute thirty-eight million four hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred, to balance Reserve for Fiscal Stabilization Fund for a total decrease of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
And, Mr. Janjordano, both of those figures were in parentheses.
Read it again.
They were both in parentheses.
Okay. On page forty-four and line sixteen, strike in parentheses, thirty-seven million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred, and substitute in parentheses, thirty-eight million four hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred, to balance Reserve for Fiscal Stabilization Fund for a total decrease of, in parentheses, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
And also, seventy-eight was in parentheses, the numbers, but you don't have to read them, we're going to give the explanation again, just want the record to be clear that they're in parentheses.
Thank you.
Amendment number eighty on page forty-four and line twenty-one, strike seventy-three million nine hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven, and substitute seventy-eight million four hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, to balance estimated unassigned fund balance at June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three for a total increase of four million four hundred and seventy-two thousand. Amendment number eighty-one on page forty-four and line twenty-three, strike seven hundred and fifty-seven million nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, and substitute seven hundred and sixty-eight million four hundred and ninety-six thousand, to balance fiscal year twenty-twenty-four estimated expenditures for a total increase of ten million five hundred, in parentheses, ten million five hundred and sixty thousand. Amendment number eighty-two on page forty-four and line twenty-four, strike ten million four hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and eight dollars, and substitute four million three hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars, to balance estimated unassigned balance for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five and future years for a total decrease, in parentheses, six million eighty-eight thousand dollars. Amendment number eighty-three on page forty-four and line twenty-five, strike thirty-seven million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred, and substitute thirty-eight million four hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred, to balance Reserve for Fiscal Stabilization Fund for a total decrease of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Amendment number eighty-four on page fifty-seven and line seventeen, strike one million five hundred and twenty-five thousand, and substitute three million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, to balance federal grant for a total increase of two million two hundred and fifty thousand.
Break.
Take a break.
Amendment number eighty-five on page fifty-seven and line nineteen, strike twelve million one hundred and fourteen thousand, substitute fifteen million seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, to balance state grants for a total increase of three million six hundred and seven thousand. Amendment number eighty-six on page fifty-seven and line twenty-one, strike five million one hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred, and substitute twenty-five million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand and forty-two dollars, to balance developer other for a total increase of twenty million six hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. Amendment number eighty-seven on page fifty-seven and line twenty-two, strike one hundred and seventy-four million one hundred and nineteen thousand, and substitute two hundred million six hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars, to balance total estimated revenues for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four for a total increase of twenty-six million five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and six, twenty-six million five hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. Amendment number eighty-eight on page fifty-seven and line twenty-three, in parentheses, strike in parentheses, one hundred and seventy-four million one hundred and nineteen thousand, and substitute in parentheses, two hundred million six hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars, to balance total estimated expenditures fiscal year twenty-twenty-four for a total increase, in parentheses, of twenty-six million five hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-two. Amendment number eighty-nine on page fifty-nine and line fifteen, strike three million seven hundred and fifteen thousand, and substitute four million one hundred and fifteen thousand, to balance state grants for a total increase of four hundred thousand. Amendment number ninety on page fifty-nine and line sixty, sixteen, strike five hundred and twenty-five thousand, and substitute three million five hundred and twenty-five thousand, to balance developer other for a total increase of three million dollars. Amendment number ninety-one on page fifty-nine and line seventeen, strike eleven million seven hundred and ninety thousand, and substitute fifteen million one hundred and ninety thousand, to balance total estimated revenues fiscal year twenty-twenty-four for a total increase of three million four hundred thousand. Amendment number ninety-two on page fifty-nine and line eighteen, strike eleven, in parentheses, eleven million seven hundred and ninety thousand, and substitute in parentheses, fifteen million one hundred and ninety thousand, to balance estimated expenditures fiscal year twenty-twenty-four for a total increase of, in parentheses, three million four hundred thousand. Amendment number ninety-three on page sixty between lines nine to ten, insert the following: Other, four hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight, to balance other funds for a total increase of four hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight. Amendment number ninety-four on page sixty and line twelve, strike twenty million one hundred and eighty-six thousand, and substitute twenty million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, to balance total estimated revenues for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four for a total increase of four hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight. Amendment number ninety-five on page sixty and line thirteen, strike in parentheses, twenty million one hundred and eighty-six thousand, and substitute twenty million five hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-eight.
Five hundred and eighty-nine.
Twenty million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-eight.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
To balance estimated expenditures fiscal year twenty-twenty-four for a total increase of four hundred, in parentheses, four hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight. Amendment number ninety-six on page forty-four and line eight, strike one hundred and sixty-nine million two hundred and fifty-five thousand eleven, and substitute one hundred and seventy-four million two hundred and fifty-five and eleven dollars, to balance total estimated fund balance at June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three for a total increase of five million, that was in parentheses. Amendment number ninety-seven, finally, on page forty-four and line nine, strike one hundred and sixty-nine million two hundred and fifty-five thousand eleven, and substitute one hundred and seventy-four million two hundred and fifty-five and eleven, to balance fund, in parentheses, to balance fund balance available for appropriation at June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three for a total increase of five million dollars.
Thank you. These amendments will balance the budget based on the amendments passed last week, and we will be considering them this evening in voting blocks, Ms. Spence, Mr. Sanders.
Are they, are they in a voting block?
I'm dizzy.
Take a break. You all right?
Good evening, Council President and Council members. Do you want me to just, well, with the blocks?
Yep.
Okay.
If you want to bring that mic a little closer to you, I think.
Voting block thirteen. Voting block thirteen, they're balancing amendments for fund balance and total revenues and appropriations for the general fund operating budget. They're amendments number fifty-nine through sixty-two, and it basically just increases the fund balance appropriated to ten million five hundred and sixty thousand from the amendments you passed last week.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve voting block thirteen?
Council President, I move to approve voting block thirteen containing amendments fifty-nine through sixty-two.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's moved in second to approve voting block thirteen, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley. Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, voting block thirteen is hereby approved.
Voting block fourteen, amendments sixty-three through sixty-six, these are balancing amendments for the general capital budget, fund balancing amendments as well as appropriations.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve voting block fourteen?
Council President, I move to approve voting block fourteen containing amendments sixty-three through sixty-six.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's moved in second to approve voting block fourteen, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, voting block fourteen is hereby approved.
Voting block fifteen, amendments sixty-seven and sixty-eight, this is to balance the Parks and Recreation Capital Budget Fund Balancing Amendments and Appropriations, that was in the amount of three million four hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve voting block fifteen?
Council President, I move to approve voting block fifteen containing amendments sixty-seven through sixty-eight.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve voting block fifteen, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley. Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, voting block fifteen is hereby approved.
Voting block sixteen, amendments sixty-nine through seventy-seven, this is the Water and Sewer Capital Budget Balancing Amendments and Appropriations, as well as number seventy-seven is to balance the total all capital budget appropriation.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve voting block sixteen?
Council President, I move to approve voting block sixteen containing amendments sixty-nine through seventy-seven.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve voting block sixteen, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, voting block sixteen is hereby approved.
Voting block seventeen, amendments seventy-eight through eighty-three are to balance the general fund statement of estimated unassigned fund balance.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve voting block seventeen?
Council President, I move to approve voting block seventeen containing amendments seventy-eight through eighty-three.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. It's moved in second to approve voting block seventeen, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, voting block seventeen is hereby approved.
Voting block eighteen is to balance the general capital fund statement of estimated unappropriated fund balance, they were amendments eighty-four through eighty-eight.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve voting block eighteen?
Council President, I move to approve voting block eighteen containing amendments eighty-four through eighty-eight.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve voting block eighteen, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley. Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, voting block eighteen is hereby approved.
Voting block nineteen, amendments eighty-nine through ninety-two, is to balance the Parks and Recreation Capital Fund Statement of Estimated Unappropriated Fund Balance.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve voting block nineteen, please?
Council President, I move to approve voting block nineteen containing amendments eighty-nine through ninety-two.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve voting block nineteen, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, voting block nineteen is hereby approved.
Voting block twenty is to balance the Water and Sewer Capital Fund Statement of Unrestricted Net Assets, and it is our amendments ninety-three through ninety-five.
May I have a motion to approve voting block twenty?
Council President, I move to approve voting block twenty containing amendments ninety-three through ninety-five.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve voting block twenty, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, voting block twenty is hereby approved.
Voting block twenty-one, amendments ninety-six and ninety-seven, is to balance the general fund statement of estimated unassigned fund balance, the total estimated fund balance at June thirtieth.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve voting block twenty-one?
Council President, I move to approve voting block twenty-one containing amendments ninety-six and ninety-seven.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve voting block twenty-one, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, voting block twenty-one is hereby approved. Amendments to Bill twenty-three dash zero sixteen, Charter Amendment Term Limits, after a discussion with Mr. Penman and Ms. Sodles, they've decided to pull this, a piece of legislation so that amendments are not needed. Number eleven, call for final reading of bills. Bill twenty-three dash thirteen, EMS ambulance transport increase rates as amended, may have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill twenty-three dash thirteen as amended.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve Bill twenty-three dash zero thirteen as amended, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
No.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
No.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, two in the negative, Bill twenty-three dash zero thirteen as amended is hereby approved. Bill twenty-three dash zero fourteen, annual appropriation ordinance as amended, may have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill twenty-three dash fourteen as amended.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve Bill twenty-three dash zero fourteen as amended, is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett.
You know, obviously, the budget process has been very long. I don't know if the days have actually been longer than in previous years, but it definitely has been an arduous experience for everybody involved. I do want to make it very clear, I'm proud of where we've gotten to from where we started, but also be clear that where we started wasn't acceptable. You know, and I really struggle with the vote tonight because, you know, we have improved the budget in a lot of ways, and the county executive has been open to amendments to make those improvements. But at the same time, as it stands, you know, we're still not funding any COLA for our library workers, and we're still putting our community college system in a place where they have to increase tuition costs, while our neighboring county, over in Baltimore County, is making community college tuition free. And we're, you know, and, and we're still partially funding programs that used to be fully funded, you know, like the three hundred thousand dollars to our volunteer firefighters You know, like the $300,000 to our volunteer firefighters has been turned into $250,000. You know, and I recognize that no budget can be perfect or have everything that I want to have in it. Because even if I was county executive, you know, the county council would amend my budget and it still wouldn't be everything I want in it. But I think one of the larger things I struggle with is just how the process was started and handled. As far as, you know, not negotiating with our classified employees in good faith. Not meeting with the Sheriff's Department in good faith. Not, not meeting with our stakeholders and, and, you know, area experts. And, and understanding their components of the budget before crafting their portions of the budget. You know, those are things that I really struggle with. And I struggle with the idea of putting my yes on this budget considering those, like institutional issues I have with the process and, and how we've gotten here. You know, I'm very thankful, for instance, that we were able to improve school funding by $10 million. But even so, you know, the school system's talking about cutting summer tutoring to help preserve positions and, and make things function for next year. And talking about no longer expanding school safety liaisons to make things function for next year. And so, again, I have a hard time putting my yes on that. So, you know, it's a hard thing. I understand, in the grand scheme of things, a vote no on a budget by a council member can have ripple effects. I've heard the stories from prior administrations, from prior council members who have ever taken that action. It's frustrating that that culture exists in which somebody can, you know, have their district threatened or held against, which hasn't happened to me, but it has happened in the past to other council members, over their decision on a single vote. I have trust and faith that this administration would not take that action because there's so many issues that are too important to let something like that get in the way. But at the same time, you know, I'm just in a place of struggle. I'm being willing to put, you know, the Jacob Bennett stamp of approval on this budget as it stands. I hope that next year, we're able to make some of those changes in meeting with organizations and meeting with the people who are out in the field doing the work for our community to make sure their needs are met. So we don't make those same communication pitfalls. Because even in an imperfect budget, if those improvements were there, I'd be a lot more comfortable today putting my yes vote forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Stanlis, Ms. Spence, I, I really do thank you for your time and your patience on developing this. I know we always didn't agree on, on certain things. And, you know, I know that it's a new administration and, and there's been a learning curve on, on both sides. But I would echo what Councilman Bennett had mentioned. There was some frustration. And we are in a better place than when we started from. And, you know, in, in the sake of compromise, you know, you shouldn't come out of compromise and everybody be happy. But there are some things that I, I think that we failed to address. And I, I believe in, in people. When you have 1.5%, not even on the entire county workforce, there are some that, you know, didn't get the increase. But 1.5% with a possibility of another 1.5% down the road. If we don't invest in our people and recruit the best and the brightest, the whole enterprise falls apart. So I hope that that's reconsidered next year. The Sheriff's Office is another consideration. We have a project that is ready to move forward. I know that's already bonded. We talked about it this evening. It's not necessarily in the budget. But I hope that moves forward, as well as there's positions that have been zeroed out in the Sheriff's Office. Where the salaries, unless the sheriff is able to come up with his own, out of his own budget himself, those salaries won't be paid. So I think there's room for improvement. I, I do appreciate the county executive negotiating, you know, with some of the, the departments and organizations. And I look forward to a better, more streamlined process next year with that. So, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. Mr. Riley?
Yes, one thing I'd like to mention, there's one person that was never at the table and has never been mentioned, and that's the taxpayer of Hartford County. And so when I look at this budget, it's definitely going to be a yes for me. And I appreciate the work of the county executive and Rob and Kim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Guthrie?
I thank you all, and I like to thank the four new members up here. I'm new old. And their efforts on this budget, it's their first trip down this lane. And I understand where they're coming from. Having done 12 budgets before this, I know how tough they can be. This was probably the toughest one I've seen in, in absolutely the other 12 budgets. But you, when you look at the budget, you got to look at it overall. And it's, it's, after you've been through this process for all the many months that we have been through it, it, it makes it tough to vote against a budget. Because you can't vote against a budget because you didn't get this, that, the other, four or five other items, whatever it is. Because there's, I mean, I never counted them all, but there's thousands of items in this budget that are getting funded. And you can't say, I don't want to vote, I don't want to vote for this budget because I didn't get this thing or that thing or the other thing. You got to look at it overall. And you got to, as I've always said before, you know, you got to play with the cards you got and you got to know when to hold them and when to fold them. And so I, I compliment our four new people dealing with the budget this tough. But I, I'm kind of jealous because they didn't know how tough this budget was because they didn't do another one before, so. But I congratulate them for the effort they put forth. And a number of them, we've met, I don't, I can't tell you how many times in our offices and talked about different things in a budget. And, and we're here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Bennett?
Just one last thing I wanted to share. You know, there's been some conversation about, you know, if, if money looks better than we expect it to, that we could move money to this agency or that department. And I just want to share that I'm, in general, against that practice. You know, it's almost like your employee isn't making enough money in their wages to survive, so you give them a bonus this year to pay their rent. But then next year, their current wages are still the same, so you haven't solved the issue long term. I think if projections, or if, you know, our revenue comes in better than projections, that money should be held on to. And then we use that for next year's budget, so we set new baselines moving forward. I think the act of, oh, we have some money here, let's give a little bit bonus. It puts a disproportionate amount of power in the county government and the county executive's office. And then we can make a habit of underprojecting revenues in order to always have that little bit of gimme in the fall and the winter. And I think it's better to say, oh, the projections came in, or the money came in higher than projections, we'll use that towards next year's budgets. So that our budgets year over year reflect an accurate depiction of how much money's been given. And we can know what our maintenance of effort is for each agency moving forward from there.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Jan Giordano?
Might as well say something too. So I, I certainly do appreciate all your efforts, sitting here for hours, going through questions that we have, you know, some disagreements with where money's coming from, how money's being used. You know, having gone through a couple of budgets, although some of them were virtual and one of them, I was out sick. But certainly, I'm glad to see the county executive negotiating. Not, everybody got everything that they wanted, but I think it's a good step forward. I, I hope that we're, we're wrong and that, you know, we do have increased revenues. You know, that we look back last year and, and see, okay, we, we did do better. I hate to see us do worse. I still think we've got some hard roads ahead of us. So I hope that doesn't happen and I, and I hope we can be able to fund the other 1.5% for the other employees. And, and we're in better, better financial position next year, so. But I do thank everybody for their efforts. All the department heads for coming, for coming in, listening to us, getting back with us, answering questions. You're, you're definitely professionals. You, you come back, we have questions, you, you send us back information. Thankfully, we have Crystal Brooks, which is, which is great. She keeps us straight, keeps me straight. I appreciate that. And, and I think everybody learns a little bit, and I just wanted to thank everybody for their efforts, so, appreciate it.
Thank you. I guess I'll close in comments just by saying, unless Ms. Sodles, you have anything? Just by saying, I want to thank all of you for doing all your due diligence, whether you're a new council member, whether you've been here for however long you've been here for. But I want to, I just want to thank you for the efforts that you put forward, the, the compromises that you made, the, the ability to work with the administration the way that we did. I know there were some challenges back and forth. I want to thank the county executive for listening to us, funding nearly 85% of what we sent him, over and above. I appreciate that. I, I agree with all the comments made here this evening. Mr. Bennett made some good comments, Mr. Penman made some good comments. Mr. Riley made some excellent comments, right on down the line. I, I do believe that we should all be proud of where we're at so far. We know that we have other work to do in the future. And I look forward to having the ability to work with our citizen budget advisors throughout the year. To help us have a better understanding when that budget comes forward, help us navigate through it. And again, I appreciate all of you, all of your efforts, both Robbie and Kim and your departments. I know you have Christine here and Elders here. So thank you to all of you. Thank you to the county executive. And with that, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
There'll be six votes in the affirmative, one in a negative. Bill 23-014 as amended is hereby approved. Again, Bill 23-016 has been pulled. Bill 23-017, School Bus Stop Armed Camera Fees. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-17.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moving to second to approve Bill 23-017. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
You know, being safe on the road is just so critical. There's just been so many tragedies in our community in just the past few weeks. And, you know, you wish that you didn't need any of this to keep people from pulling around a bus when it stopped. But I'm thankful that we have this and that it's an expanding thing and that we're also increasing the punishment to people who are unsafe and put children at risk and put other people on the road at risk. But yeah, I'm just, I think this is a good step in the right direction. Hopefully, down the line, it can even be a stricter punishment because I just, you know, selfish driving is a horrible thing.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and a negative. Bill 23-017 is hereby approved. Bill 23-018, Pay Plan and Classification Plan. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-18.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moving to second to approve Bill 23-018. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and a negative. Bill 23-018 is hereby approved. Bill 23-019, Amen 2018 Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-19.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moving to second to approve Bill 23-019. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and a negative. Bill 23-019 is hereby approved. Enrollment of Bills. 23-013 EMS Ambulance Transport Increase Rates as Amended. Bill 23-014, Annual Appropriation Ordinance as Amended. Bill 23-017, School Bus Stop Armed Camera Fees. Bill 23-018, Pay Plan and Classification Plan. Bill 23-019, Amen 2018 Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan are certified as being the text finally passed. Agenda number eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions. Resolution 024-23, Adoption of Property Tax Rate. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 024-23.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moving to second to approve Resolution 024-23. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and a negative. Resolution 024-23 is hereby approved. Resolution 025-23, Fiscal Year 24 Capital Improvement Program as Amended. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 025-23.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moving to second to approve Resolution 025-23 as amended. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and a negative. Resolution 025-23 as amended is hereby approved. Resolution 027-23, Glenwood Avenue Petition Annual Assessment. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 027-23.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's moving to second to approve Resolution 027-23. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and a negative. Resolution 027-23 is hereby approved. Resolution 028-23, Amendment Master Water and Sewer Plan Spring Update 2023. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 028-23.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moving to second to approve Resolution 028-23. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and a negative. Resolution 028-23 is hereby approved. Resolution 029-23, Amendment Fry's Road Public Sewer Project Annual Assessment. Mr. Guthrie?
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution 029-23.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's moving to second to approve Resolution 029-23. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and a negative. Resolution 029-23 is hereby approved. Resolution 030-23, Amendment Magnolia Road Public Sewer Project Annual Assessment. Mr. Guthrie?
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution 030-23.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's moving to second to approve Resolution 030-23. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and a negative. Resolution 030-23 is approved. Resolution 031-23, Amendment Woodbridge Manor Public Sewer Project Annual Assessment. Mr. Guthrie?
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution Number 031-23.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Moved and seconded to approve Resolution 031-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and a negative. Resolution 031-23 is hereby approved. Resolution 35-23, Performance and Operational Audits Fiscal Year 2024. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 035-23.[1684.08]
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. Let's move to the second to approve Resolution zero thirty-five dash twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Resolution zero thirty-five dash twenty-three is hereby approved. Agenda item number nine, introduction of bills, we have none. Thirteen unfinished business, we have none. Fourteen new business, we have none. Seventeen comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have six this evening.
Very good.
Bill Wayland, followed by John Malamo.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening again. Bill Wayland, four fifteen Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland. I have a general comment, listening tonight, that whenever amendments are made to a bill that really changes the purpose and the entire intent of the bill after a public hearing has been held, I don't believe those amendments should be approved at that same session until further discussions, maybe even another public hearing is held. And I don't intend that for minor changes or making wording corrections. I've heard this topic in the past, and I think it's been brought by the council. Mr. Vicente, on another subject, you requested I talk to Mr. Roby. We did, we had a very good conversation about the school bus cameras, and I really liked the contract after he explained it to me and the fact that they're going to do this on all buses during the summer. He talked about a hundred.
Mr. Wayland, you shouldn't even be speaking to that tonight. That was an action item this evening.
Well, I'm just making a general comment.
I appreciate it, but it's an action item this evening.
The thank you type of thing. It's not a big deal.
Thank you.
I made a few suggestions and observations after gaining some insight to the workings of the administration and the council for about ten years. And I'm going to say again that developers, commercial landowners, government contractors, and others who profit from government decisions do have enormous clout, and it tends to take precedence sometimes over citizens despite the fact that the government reports to the citizens. I made a statement, don't be influenced by others or engage in backdoor deals. Make those decisions based upon fact, law, zoning requirements, and during your time to speak, try and keep your comments to business matters and not personal other superfluous or irrelevant matters. Us citizens have the same personal issues. Be responsive to questions and concerns from citizens. Avoid saying, I will look into a concern, and never respond again to that person. And as far as the explanation for a yes or no comment, many of you are doing that, and I appreciate that, especially on controversial issues. At that meeting, I mentioned we all have our own self-interests. I have mine, and that's normal and understandable. You each know the reasons for seeking election to the council and perhaps have different motives and reasons, and maybe some of the same. I believe all of them, and I do say this, that you all have a desire to make Harford County a better place to live and work. So it's my hope that decisions you make as you go forward will be in the best interests of the citizens of Harford County and not just your particular district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, two thousand four hundred and two, Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland, two thousand ten fifteen. In a sworn affidavit, sixteen March twenty-seventeen, Mr. Bradley F. Killian, a previous director of Harford County Planning and Zoning, veered that, in my capacity as director of planning and zoning, I have determined that the Harford airports have been granted all land use approvals required to permit the renewed of its license pursuant to COMAR. And Harford County Airport Owners Group, Perrin's Inc., Perrin's Harford Airport, was granted a special exception to operate a general aviation airport by decision of the zoning hearing examiner dated April sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, final decision of the County Board of Appeals dated September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and opinion and order by the Circuit Court of Harford County, Maryland, dated April fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. And based on my personal knowledge, on or about March first, two thousand and seventeen, my office conducted a review of the zoning status of the airport and sent a letter with our findings to Kevin Hess, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit One. Recall Exhibit One is Mr. Davenport's letter to Mr. Hess reversing the Board of Appeals decision and reviving the nonconforming use without any basis. Airport owner's motion for dismissal, the administrative law judge agreed in discussing the legal standard in the proposed decision. In considering a motion for summary decision, it is not my responsibility to decide any issue of fact or credibility, but only to determine whether such issues exist, and holding the airport is operating as a permitted, a special exception, a permitted use. And the MAA does not have zoning authority. I noted an exception to the administrative law judge's proposed decision to the Maryland Department of Transportation. The designated appointing authority upheld the proposed decision, holding that Harford County Airport is operating as a permitted use by special exception. And MAA does not have the jurisdiction or capacity to determine whether or not there is compliance with local zoning ordinances. Maryland Department of Transportation offered no relief to the airport owners and reinforced the authority of the zoning board of appeals and the conditions of zoning case fifty-eight fourteen, and upheld the same. Harford County Planning and Zoning cannot claim the FAA or the MAA prevents them from enforcing the zoning code and zoning decisions of zoning case fifty-eight fourteen. They returned the issue back to zoning board of appeals and planning and zoning resolution. No denying that. Now, which one of you can explain the difference between a permitted use and a nonconforming use, and how contrary to Maryland law, the same use on the same property can be both a nonconforming use and a permitted use? And what is the purpose of the zoning board of appeals if its decisions are not enforced? Good night.
Good night.
Diana Sadowski, followed by Michael Blum.
Ms. Sadowski? Mr. Blum?
Good evening, I'm Mike Blum. I live at eight hundred Sodder Mill Lane, Bel Air, Maryland. It is my wonderful, wonderful privilege every so often to introduce the new Ms. Bel Air. And that's what I'm here tonight to do before I turn it over to her. Ms. Bel Air, a graduate of John Carroll School, is Giovanna Ward. Giovanna Ward is currently a student at the Boston Conservatory in Berkeley, majoring in contemporary dance performance at John Carroll. She graduated with distinction in fine arts with a four-point-oh-plus average. She is a magnificent young lady, a wonderful ambassador for our town, and I will yield the rest of my time to Giovanna Ward, Ms. Bel Air, two thousand and twenty-three.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak today. As Michael said, I am Giovanna Ward, Ms. Bel Air, two thousand and twenty-three. The Bel Air Independence Day Committee manages all the celebrations on Tuesday, July fourth, in the town of Bel Air, Maryland. Just a quick overview of our events. At six forty-five a.m., we have a flag raising ceremony at Bel Air High School. Then followed, at Bel Air High School, the pancake breakfast from seven to eleven-thirty a.m. At Rockfield Park, we'll have the horseshoe pitching from eight-thirty a.m. to two p.m., followed by at Shamrock Park, a full day of activities and games, family competitions and contests. At Bel Air Elementary School, we have the eleven a.m. bicycle rodeo, Bel Air July Fourth Parade, which I will be leading and being the honorary grand marshal, which I'm very excited about, at six p.m., excuse me. And then Bel Air July Fourth Fireworks, sponsored by Jones Junctions, at nine-thirty p.m. So those are some of our events for the day, for the celebration. But as Ms. Bel Air, I create a CSI, a community service initiative, and mine is called Arts All Across, where I advocate for arts programs and funding for arts programs throughout Harford County and hopefully throughout as the state, as Ms. Maryland. I want to make sure that every student has the opportunity to have access to arts education, no matter what school that they go to, as well as inclusivity throughout the arts, making sure that anyone, no matter your age, ability, economic status, anything, has the access and ability to participate in arts programs. Lastly, I'm very excited, in just a couple days, actually, I leave for Hagerstown, where I will be competing for the title of Ms. Maryland. And so maybe at the end of the week, by June twenty-fourth, I could be coming back here as Ms. Maryland, which would be really, really cool. But overall, I'm just really, really excited because you can only represent one town once your entire life, and so being a native, born and raised from Bel Air, Maryland, I'm very, very excited to represent all of Bel Air, my family and everyone from Bel Air. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ward, and we wish you all the best.
Ron Stucinski, followed by Kate McDonald.
Good evening, council. Ron Stucinski, three nineteen Marina Avenue, Aberdeen, Maryland, Perryman Peninsula. Not really sure I can talk about Pat. I'm going to start with this. Jess, I agree with you on rewriting the zoning code and fixing part of our code, but I do want to read what our zoning code says that protects not only our community, but the communities of Foston and other communities in our area. Zoning code is enacted to support the master plan designed to control traffic congestion on public roads, provide adequate light and air, and to promote the conservat- conservitation (sigh) (inaudible) edit that. Of natural resources, including the preservation of productive agricultural land to facilitate the construction of housing of different types to meet the needs of the county's present and future residents, to prevent environmental pollution, to avoid undue concentration of population and congestion, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, recreation, parks, and other facilities, to give reasonable consideration, among other things, to the character of each district and its suitability for particular uses, with a view to conserving the value of buildings, encouraging the orderly development and most appropriate use of land throughout the county, and to secure safety from fire, panic, and other danger, and to conserve the value of property. Obviously, I can't speak on twenty-three-eleven tonight, but we all know why it was written. They were here and they left. Next, I want to invite all of you to our community town hall tomorrow at six-thirty p.m. at the Refuge Temple at one-sixteenth Spasucha Road in Aberdeen. Our community welcomes all of you to attend. Also, last but not least, I want to congratulate the people of Foston for their minor victory tonight. Also, I would like to point out, our community is also fighting for freedom from overdevelopment, I will say. You can find our information at www.perryman.com, which is right here on the screen somewhere. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll get back in three minutes.
Thank you.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Agenda item number sixteen, business from council members. Mr. Bennett?
Hello, Mr. Stucinski.
Can you keep going? I do. I'm sorry.
Mr. Ron, he took one of my comments, which was to promote the meeting tomorrow, but I appreciate you sharing that. I would have more to share. Unfortunately, I think the busyness of the past few months caught up with me, and I fell under the weather this week and had to rearrange. I was supposed to have four different meetings yesterday that I need to rearrange. And I look forward to catching up with all those people I was supposed to meet with. You know, we have one more meeting left before we enter the summer, during the summer season. I'm going to be working on a lot of legislation, a lot of it tied around zoning, about environmental practice. And so I encourage you, if you have any sort of legislative priority, if you feel in the community that we live in, there's anything that needs to be taken care of, to reach out to myself or my legislative aide so that we can get that work done. You know, I'm going from having two full-time jobs to a recess from both of them at the same time. So it's, you know, it's kind of like I just took off ankle weights and a heavy backpack, and now I'm going to be able to do a whole lot in a little bit of time. So please reach out, please share, so I can get that work done.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Sodles?
Hi, everyone. Tomorrow's Flag Day. Just wanted to take a moment to talk about what the truly, the holiday truly is about. Our flag symbolizes the growth and struggles of our great nation, the freedom that the brave men and women of our armed forces have fought so hard for, and the ideals and values that make our nation great. In a world divided by many things, the American flag is one symbol that should unite every American, and we should celebrate our flag and the freedom it represents on Flag Day tomorrow. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
Yeah, the only thing I want to present tonight is I had the privilege of, we voted on the Hartford Living Treasurer last eve, the last Tuesday, on Robert Farrington, and I presented it, went down on Saturday. And our last, our last meeting, I'll give a story on that. It was, it's a pretty good story. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday at eight-thirty at the Ma and Pa Trail is the Freedom Five-K Run hosted by the NAACP. So it starts at eight-thirty. They did not tell me where on the Ma and Pa Trail, so might want to look that up. July fourth is coming up. Please come out and support the Bel Air High School Athletic Booster Club by attending their Independence Day Pancake Breakfast on July fourth from seven a.m. to eleven-thirty. I sponsored this past couple of years. When I was a member of the J.C.'s, we used to do the Pancake Breakfast at the junior high. So it's a, it's a great event. Kids love it. So come out and support that. And then looking forward to the Independence Day Parade in Bel Air. Bel Air's got a couple of good parades. Independence Day and the Christmas Parade, so look forward to that. And we had a big golf tournament for the Society of Italian-American Businessmen, raised probably about thirty-five thousand to benefit ARC and Action Agency. So we, we got it through the rain, but there's going to be a lot of happy people with, you know, we donate the money. So congratulations to them. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was encouraged by the presentation from the Maryland State Comptroller last week. From what was described in research, all the revenue and the state revenue fund is returned in the next fiscal year. I know that is contrary to what was discussed in the budget hearing, and we will need to follow up on that moving forward. I'm looking forward to the council and the citizen budget visors monitoring how and when the funds from the reserve fund are returned to the county budget, with the hopes of funding some of the budgets and projects that were cut this fiscal year. I think it's also important to note that Baltimore County Public Schools are offering a four-thousand bonus transfer for certain educators, just like law enforcement, to teachers. Market is competitive, and if we don't maintain competitive salary package, we will be unable to recruit the best and the brightest for Harford County. As far as term limits, I'm disappointed that bill had to be pulled off. I think with the amendments, we were just too far away. Fortunately, there is another avenue through referendum and signatures that will be taken advantage of, but I do want to convey my appreciation for Councilwoman Bull Sodles for your cosponsorship on that, and I look forward to working with you on obtaining those signatures. With that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. It has some sad news. I guess some of you probably saw this, that beloved elementary, Jabba Town Elementary School teacher died in a fiery automobile crash over the weekend, and I've met her a couple of times at the school, and she's going to be surely missed. Mrs., the principal, Jessica Hachcott, who made a comment about her, and she said, Mrs. Clark's passing has affected all of us very deeply. We must now focus our concerns on the well-being of our students and staff as they learn to cope with this tragic loss. So my best to them and their families. I'm sure it's, it's a terrible time, and she was only thirty-five years old. I, I wanted to talk to you about, real quick, about the, the bill that, the tipping fee passing, because a lot of people in my neighborhood, and I've just got a recent letter from, from the solid waste people, pick up the trash, the CFL, and so a lot of people asked me about it and what it said. So I wanted to make sure all these numbers were right, and they were, but I wanted, I want to tell you where this money is and why it's there and why it has to be there. and why it has to be there, because I called my friend Johnny Oseski, Johnny O., who's the county executive of Baltimore County, he's a good friend of mine, him and I came up due to labor movement together, and to get confirmation of these different fees. And he said, "The bill increased tipping fees from seventy-two dollars a ton to a hundred and seventeen dollars a ton. This is sixty-two point five percent increase in tipping fees, drastically increases the cost disposed in Harford County." Now, that's what was dropped on the county executive's lap, so you can try to blame him all you want, but this is exactly the cost that I got from Baltimore County, that we were paying seventy-two dollars and now going to be paying a hundred and seventeen, so that the county's not going to make a penny on that. And what happened was, according to Johnny O., the, the landfill where they're working now is starting to get filled, then they were, had to go and then used another landfill, and when they did, the company that they're dealt with are raising their tipping fees to go to the other place. So what Johnny told me is that they are going to send out new bids in July and get new bids for this contract, and he expects they'll get them within thirty days after that, and then they'll look them over, and if they can get a contract that's less than this, they then have to do it just like they do here, they got to bring it before the county council, and their kind of council has to approve it, and if there's a savings, he said he'll be in touch with me and County Executive Bob Cassely, and pass those savings along to Harford County. One other thing, Thursday, last Thursday, myself and Pat Vicenti attended the ARC Northern Region Capital Annual Meeting over at Wooders Edge. It was their seventieth anniversary, so I was glad to give them their proclamations honoring their seventieth anniversary, and with my grandson there, because he is, as most of you know, he's in one of the ARC houses, and we usually pick him up every weekend, and we're well listening because of Father's Day, so thank you, Mr. President, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Fifteen business from the president. I think, I think I've hit the adequate public facilities meeting enough. One more? So June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, four thirty PM, second floor council conference room. The other thing I wanted to say, Mr. Stucinski, with your invitation for tomorrow night, my calendar's full, my aide, Ms. Harris, is running to other events as well, if I could, I would be there, but tomorrow night I can't. Got a Good Scout Award, I mean, a Good Scout Award meeting to be at, and some other things. But this past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Harford Legacy Farm Celebration. It's a huge event, Harford County recognized, I think, sixty-one legacy farms in our county, and it was amazing to realize that some of our farms have been in our families for over four hundred years, and it's just, I can't hardly believe it, to be honest, but it was a great event, well-attended. Secretary Addicts, Maryland Department of Agriculture, was our guest speaker there. But also, even more inspiring was the graduation ceremonies that we went to for both Harford Community College's future links with, I think it was, six graduates, and then the Harford Academy was five. If you ever have the opportunity to go, you should go. Mr. Guthrie was there with us, Mr. Riley was at the farm event, the county executive was there, along with Senator Galian, Delegate Riley, Delegate Griffith, it was a packed house, so probably close to four hundred in attendance, I would think. So just, just, all of us stay extremely busy, I say it every week, and I can't emphasize it, to really explain how busy council members stay and the different events that they attend, but we appreciate the opportunity to be wherever we can be and want to thank you, and with that, we'll adjourn this meeting, thank you.